I would like to reconvene the meeting and call the meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of July 16, 2019. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Moats.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, could you please give the closed session report?
Madam Mayor, with respect to the discussion item, there was no reportable interest.
Thank you. Our first order of business is a presentation by your Recreation and Parks Department. And I guess Mr. Passat is not here? Oh, yes.
I showed up just before.
Well, I saw Mr. Smitherman and I thought, okay, you're not here. Good. So, you have the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, we are very happy to present to you the 2019 Summer Hometown Heroes. For the public, just a little bit of information, we want to let you know that the Hometown Hero Program is a banner program that we've created to recognize our local veterans and active-duty military personnel. We're in partners with the Santa Maria American Legion Post 56, the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 2521, and we also have a new member group, the Midstate Veterans Alliance. They're starting their participation with this series of awardees. So, the Hometown Hero Program recognizes city residents who currently serve or have served in the United States of Military by displaying a banner with the honoree's military photo, if it's available, and branch of service, and any special decorations that they received while in service. Tonight, joining us are Richard Noriega, American Legion Post Commander, and Michael Statnick, Veterans of Foreign War. He's the past commander of the local post. And they're going to assist management analyst Dennis Smitherman in handing out our recognitions this evening. So, without any further ado, I would like to move on to our honorees today. So, we have a couple of individuals who we're presenting these awards posthumously to. First up is Cornelius McGinley, United States Army, and this is being presented by VFW Post 2521.
Can I say one thing about the two McGinleys? Are both World War II killed in action, and that is where the VFW Post is called McGinley Brothers Post 2521. So, the Post is honoring both brothers.
Thank you, Mr. Statnick. Tonight, David S. Morris, U.S. Navy, and this is, he's been nominated by Patricia Martinez, his mother. He unfortunately passed on June 13, 2018. So, we would like to invite Ms. Martinez up to accept his recognition, and thank you so much for that sacrifice that the family made.
I'd also like to say, you'll see my son passed away way too soon, but with that, I thought this was a great honor for him. He served in Iraq War. He left in 2001. And as a family, you'll see my father passed away seven months prior to my son in November, and my brother-in-law and my father will be remembered also. His name is John Kofield, and my brother-in-law is Richard May, if he died in the line of duty, and he's going to be honored. So, we'll all speak up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're recognizing Don E. Bush, U.S. Navy, and this is presented by Sandra Bush, his wife. Ms. Bush here? We'll be sure to get her the certificate. Next is Douglas B. Murch, U.S. Air Force, and nominated by Tamara Murch, his wife. Passed away on April 17, 2013. Would you like to tell us anything about your husband?
Well, he's very much loved and right. He's trying to get service at the end of the year. He's special. He's here. He's a part-time house steward. Lots of work at the local store. So, he's a joyous, appreciative person.
Next, we'd like to recognize Gilbert W. Harper, U.S. Navy, and he was nominated by Ernie Houston. Is Ernie here? We can have him turn around for a photo op if you'd like, do a better picture. Dennis, are we doing any photos?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Gilbert, very much. Thank you, Gilbert. Next, we'd like to recognize Henry E. Alfaro, U.S. Army, presented by Susanna de Saint-Gene, his friend.
Come on up and pick it up for him. That'd be great.
Next, we have John F. Kofi, U.S. Air Force, and it's presented by Debbie Shear, his daughter. Mr. Kofi passed on July 14, 2017.
My husband and I were married 63 and a half years. I think that away two years ago, we're splitting too. He is 18 and joined the service in his pictures and basic training. Thank you so much.
Next, we have John P. Kofield, U.S. Navy, Patricia Martinez, his daughter. Mr. Kofield passed November 2, 2017.
This is my sister, so my father.
Thank you. Thanks again. Thank you. Next, we have John Q. Winningham, U.S. Air Force, and he is nominated by Carol Thiler, his sister. Mr. Winningham was killed December 21, 1972, in Laos.
Where have they two been, Stedwings?
John was shot down in 72 Laos. The first remains we got back was in July of 1985. We got partial remains which we buried. And then, two years ago, they notified his son that they had found more remains. So, in 2017, we got back one remains and buried his other remains. So, he's home after 45 years.
Thank you so much for sharing that story with us. Manuel P. Perez, U.S. Army, nominated by Randy Tagupa, his nephew. Mr. Perez passed February 2008. Is Mr. Tagupa here? Thank you. We'll be sure to get him his certificate. Oh, there you are. Thank you very much. Next is Raymond McGinley, U.S. Army, and again nominated by VFW Post 2521.
And again, this is two brothers who gave their lives in war.
Next up is Richard A. May, and he's presented by Diana May, his spouse. Mr. Officer May passed away January 7, 2006, in the line of duty as a police officer in the Bay Area. And prior to that, I believe he was with the City of Lompoc as a police officer. So, we thank him for his service.
I'm his daughter. So, the daughter Brittany, we have an understudy who unfortunately couldn't be here with us, but he served the Lompoc Police Department for 15 years, and then he moved to the Bay Area and was killed in the line of duty of 2006.
Ronald Clark, U.S. Air Force, and it's presented by Angelina Michael, his daughter. Mr. Clark passed away on December 29, 2018. Are you here? Oh, there they are. Roy L. Hale, U.S. Marine Corps. Thank you very much, Mr. Thaler. And next, we have James Lawrence, U.S. Army, and is sponsored by Cheryl and Molly, his mother and sister.
Sure. My daughter's on vacation in New York, so she can't be here. We went together to do this because we wanted to honor James, who has retired. Two years ago, he's probably going to be about seven days. He has one organ in Iraq and at least five in Afghanistan by Camp Lejeune. We came back with a lot of blood, but certainly he was here. So, we're honoring him.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to again thank American Legion Post 56 and the VFW Post 2521 for their support of the program, and our new partner, the Midcoast Veterans Alliance. So, the banners are hung on College Drive in south of Bediravia Road down to McCoy Lane. So, we invite you all, take a little side trip, go and view the banners. They are up now. And since we started the program, there have been 103 recognized vets or active-duty personnel that the Council's taken a minute to say thank you. So, thank you very much.
It seems like thank you seems so trite to say thank you to the men and women who have served this country, but thank you very much for what you have given. Next, I'll just wait until they leave.
The Band of Brothers, the organization Band of Brothers, they are also.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda? This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, the speaker will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them. And Madam Mayor, there are eight requests to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Mary Clark, followed by Sarah McDonald, followed by Bob Isip. Good evening, Ms. Clark.
Good evening. I'm welcome and everything. I'm here actually, for once, not to complain about something. Council and Santa Maria PD, I want to thank you tremendously for implementing the Fireworks Task Force this year. I think it was effective. You're probably going to hear both sides tonight. I'm just speaking for myself, but way to go, 28 citations. I think that's a good start. I think we have a ways to go. I think money is a powerful motivator for people to maybe curtail away from the fourth for these, anyway, in my neighborhood it was. And I'm suggesting gently to council, perhaps, that maybe next year, you might think about increasing the fine to 15 or 2,000 even. Pismo is up to 2,000 now, and we're bigger than them. So, I just, I want to show my appreciation to you and to the police department from the bottom of my heart. The fourth is always going to be what it is here. I've resolved myself to that. But the time before and the time after, so knock on something, hasn't been as bad this year, in my opinion. So, thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Let's do it again next year.
I was just saying, it was worse in my neighborhood than I've ever seen it.
Was it? See, a lot of people have said, oh, this is the worst. And I don't, I disagree, but that's just, maybe I'm conditioned or something. Maybe I'm just over it, you know? But at 11 o'clock, everything stopped in my neighborhood.
Good.
So, and thank you for patrolling on the fourth, too. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah McDonald, followed by Bob Isip.
Good evening. I'm Sarah McDonald, and I'm from the League of Women Voters, and I'm here as part of the observer corps, and I'm here to observe your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Isip, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Stephanie Ross.
I'd like to thank you, the City Council, for allowing me the opportunity to share. My name is Bob Isip. I'm the pastor of First United Methodist Church, Santa Maria. Beginning my six years pastor of the church, I'm blessed and privileged to live in this great and growing city. Last month, I was brought to my attention that someone spoke their perspective of the Bible related to homosexuality, and the tone of his opinions was encouraging discrimination, hate, and violence toward people in the LGBTQ community. I would like to say that he doesn't represent the full Christian position on this matter, but speaks to just particular interpretation. Because of the threat and the hurt and pain caused by his remarks, I felt the need to respond, based on my Christian faith and according to a better way to interpret Bible, according to compassion, love, harmony, unity. To interpret the Bible in a legalistic, literal manner is dangerous and harmful to our community and society. In the past, such interpretations has led to colonialism, imperialism, massacres, and annihilation of peoples and cultures. The Bible is a compilation of centuries, epochs of countries and communities. If you're a serious student of the Bible, you'll see that biblical texts are complicated, a mixture of teachings that are universal, contextual, and transitional. When I say contextual, meaning that there are laws that are designed to keep closed communities within a certain order and structure. When I say transitional, the community in which the writings are directed are going through a shift and transition, and so need some advice how to cope with the changes. God does dance with times and communities. For instance, there's a time when a man could have more than one wife and concubines. The Bible didn't prohibit it, but obviously, that's not healthy today. There's a time in the Old Testament when women who are menstruating need to be quarantined. There's a time when slavery existed throughout society, and the Bible did not encourage the abolition of slavery nor outlaw it, but societies have since created laws to eliminate slavery. There's a time when homosexuality and identity was associated with promiscuity, irresponsibility, and debauchery. In various parts of the Bible, homosexuality was aligned with pagan practices of prostitution and grouped together with all forms of immorality. It spoke nothing of such persons living in fidelity, accountability, and monogamy. Our society has now established laws to allow gay marriage and make it legal, because all human beings should be entitled to companionship and to choose who they are compatible with in a faithful relationship. The Bible doesn't say anything about that, but it takes the conscience of society to arrive at a healthy and accountable system, which the Bible has to catch up with. I believe the Bible is a primary text and source of faith, but it has to be in conversation with the shifts and developments of human movements. It must not be used as a weapon for punishment or as a basis to discriminate or to encourage hate or promote violence. We've seen slaughter, genocide, and destruction, and the Bible will be and continue to be a sacred book in American history. We strive to live in peace and justice and according to the Bible. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Pastor. Gary Hall, followed by Stephanie Ross, followed by Jackie Narachi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Gary Hall. I am a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Home Team for Nesbit. Nesbit promotes the general welfare of mobile and manufactured homeowners in North Santa Barbara County. For three years, Nesbit has been pursuing the introduction and implementation of enforceable manufactured home rent stabilization in Santa Maria. We continue to ask for action that will, one, correct the failure of the informal and voluntary model lease program of 1999; two, end the excessive rent increases that have become routine over the last 19 years; protect the manufactured homeowners from any future predatory manufactured home park owners; and, four, help maintain affordable housing for seniors and low-income citizens who remain vulnerable to the rising cost of living here in Santa Maria. Four, rent stabilization stakeholder meetings, which have included city representatives, park owners, and homeowners, has been held this year. The latest meeting was held June 26, where the park owners and their attorney very effectively diverted the discussions away from developing a meaningful enforceable model lease 2020 program in favor of retaining the flexibility to negotiate leases independently in their parks on their terms only. There was no city council representative at the meeting. If there had been, they would not only witnessed the discussion drifting in favor of the park owners, but also the development of a crack in Nesbit's unity and our common position or stance. The park owner's strategy of delay seems to be working. New tenure leases are being distributed to the residents of Casa Grande Mobile Estates for signature. The residents are being told that the lease represents the best terms available, that there is a deadline of October 1 for signatures, and there is no reason to believe that Nesbit rent stabilization initiative will produce anything. The city is just not that interested. I believe they are wrong. Most, if not all, the Nesbit Subcommittee members, and I intend to keep working with the City Council... the city council and city staff to create an enforceable model lease 2020 program that will provide the homeowners the protection they deserve. I am confident we can find an appropriate balance between space rent affordability and fair rent return on investment to the park owner. That balance has been demonstrated in jurisdictions all over our state and should also exist here in Santa Maria. We believe we deserve the opportunity to get enforceable manufactured home rent stabilization in Santa Maria on the city council agenda, to give the council the opportunity to demonstrate their support or opposition with a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Stephanie Ross, followed by Jackie Narachi.
Madam Mayor, council members, and city officials, I too want to say thank you to the city for taking the fireworks situation seriously. It was heartening to know that over two dozen citations were issued this year. I certainly hope these fines can be collected, and if they can't, it winds up being community service. Can I suggest they schedule it for next July 4th? There still remains a lot to do, as illegal fireworks have been going off, I would say, every night in my neighborhood since the fourth. I think the citizens of this city deserve to relax in their living rooms or put their little kids to bed without this disturbance going on weeks before and weeks after. I hope our city will continue to look into new ways to fight the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jackie Narachi, followed by Gail McNeely, followed by Leah Marie Mix.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the proposed gun range in Los Flores Park. This is supposed to be a place for children to play, dolphins to take people on walks, horseback riding, not, not for gunshots. I feel that there's enough places that have gun ranges that we don't need another one in our beautiful park. That's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I wish I could speak on the mobile home thing, too.
Thank you, Jackie. Gail McNeely, followed by Leah Marie Mix.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm humbly asking you tonight for a new beginning in my relationship with you. My name is Gail Joseph Patrick McNeely. I'm from County Cleveland in Ohio, and I was raised as an Irish Democrat. My father said, you can't fight City Hall. I've learned that. You have to work with City Hall. I do believe in calling out leaders for their actions or lack of action. I believe in correcting the record when it needs to be corrected, and for fighting what I believe in. But, beginning now, I'd like to reason with you on issues, and the next year, I plan to talk to you about this. More funding for youth services, because the need is much greater than the funds currently allotted. Making the jobs of the mayor and the city council full-time paid positions, so that talented younger people, raising families, can run for office and lead us forward. Like San Luis Obispo and many other California cities, I think we need to limit the amount of money a person, or business, or corporation can contribute to a political campaign. We need to level the playing field, so vision and potential will be more important than how much money special interests can contribute to get their candidates elected. Limiting the Chamber of Commerce from donating large amounts to candidates while the city grants funding to them at the same time. Limiting the power of shadow membership groups like COLAB on the decisions of the mayor and council, and looking seriously at making it a rule that our city leaders cannot be members of such lobbying groups, or that they recuse themselves from any votes that benefit such groups. More than anything else, we need to stop fighting each other. We need to find a way to bring all parts of the city together, not to do what our current leaders are doing in Washington, dividing us into white and non-white, English-speaking and immigrants, rich and poor, Christian or non-Christian, as older people who know what we're doing, as opposed to younger people who are naive and don't. We are all human beings, and we need to treat each other better, as individuals, not as groups, as people, not as parties. We can do better, and as the city leaders, you need to take the lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Leah Marie Mix.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Chiefs Hansen and Champion, and all the city officials, and all you folks. I was here last year regarding illegal fireworks. I was subjected to quite a bit of it this year, I'm sure you were. I noticed they're very professionally looking. I also know, when I drove down Canal Street, every single city street had white smoke, many people, and they were blowing them off on city streets, not in the backyards. And the attitude I felt when I drove by was, you can't stop me, I'll do what I want. So I did a lot of research. I found that almost all the major cities in the U.S. have the same problem we do. We're not alone. I called numerous city departments. No one could help me. I researched them. No one could help me. Then I got, then I contacted Pismo Beach. Pismo Beach has a $2,000 fine, not a 1,000. I wanted to know how that happened. Turns out, San Luis Obispo County Superior Court set a bail schedule, not a fine, a bail schedule at $2,000. That's how they did it. Can we do that? If so, do we have to submit it to Santa Barbara County Council Meeting? I found out where that's being held. We can actually go to the County Board of Supervisors Hearing Room on Lakeside Parkway at 9:00 a.m. on August 13, and we can be a part of it. I didn't know that. I thought we had to drive all the way to Santa Barbara. So that was cool. Now, if we can't stop them, can we corral them? I had this idea last year, and the Chumash Indians said, no, we can't help you. Can we use a park? Can we use the fairgrounds, somewhere on the fairgrounds? Let's get them all together in one place. They can blow up everything, including their body parts, but let's get them together. Well, how about if we entice them with a tailgate barbecues? Maybe some rides? Maybe a few vendors? Safe and sane fireworks vendors could be there. Then we bring in the fire trucks? With hoses? Uh-huh. EMS? And let's give them the amnesty hours to do this only at this designated area. Don't find them, don't do anything. This is their one day, okay? Get it out of your system, folks, because I'm tired at 3:15 in the morning being shocked out of sleep. It's ridiculous. Now, last but not least, the residents here, like me, next year, it's on a Saturday, we won't be here in town. We will get out of town. This city's going to hurt financially because of that. And last but not least, if there's any groups here who would like to create their own little community, I have a sign-up sheet created if you want one. That way, you can get together as a little group, maybe, you know, community, neighborhood idea. So I gave up on the fire department using the hoses on the people. It's not going to work.
Ms. Mix, one thing I can always say about you, you come with solutions, and I appreciate Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, any comments you wish to make?
Sure, a couple real quick. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. Hall alluded to with mobile home housing leases, we are continuing to work toward an enforceable rent control. We had an engaged meeting at the last meeting with the homeowners and the park owners, which the city facilitated. There was agreement at that meeting upon key terms, including enforcement, and now we've been charged with writing up the provisions of what those terms are. You know, the devils will be in the details, and those will be reviewed by all at the next meeting, and we expect more discussion of those terms and how they're written up. And again, the goal for the city is to maintain affordable quality of life for our residents in the mobile homes. And regarding fireworks, yes, we did have more enforcement this year. We saw, we had an increased number of citations. We had new technology, including that Nail-A-M app that received heavy use. So we're happy with the increased enforcement and with the focusing on the fireworks, more on the Fourth of July than a longer period of time, as had been more prevalent in the past. There were no significant injuries, no walk-in injuries to Marion Hospital, and we had one small brush fire as a result of fireworks. And that concludes my question.
Thank you. I need to ask you a question. Okay, we gave citations. Are we collecting?
Yes, ma'am. With respect to those citations, thus far, we've had three appeals to a hearing officer. Those are being scheduled. The rest, as far as I know, have not yet, we have not received appeals. So we are going out to collect those.
We are going out to what?
To collect them, ma'am.
We have to go collect.
Well, it's, again, it's an administrative citation.
Okay.
So we will be proceeding accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong line, I apologize. Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members. Sorry about that, ma'am.
Okay, does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Item 3H for further discussion.
None down here? Okay. Let's see, Mr. Watson, then we should vote on the rest of the, on the rest of the...
Yes, ma'am. You should vote on the consent calendar, less, without item 3D.
With item 3H, okay.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, omitting item 3H.
I'll second that.
So moved in, in second to approve the consent calendar minus 3H. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Pino?
Aye. Okay, 3H, it's reject all bids for the Santa Maria Police Department Los Flores Ranch Shooting Facility project. Go ahead, Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to ask some clarifying questions on the project, not so much on the, not so much on us rejecting the bid.
Okay.
If I could get some context as to how this location was identified, and why it was decided that this location out at Los Flores Ranch would be the best location for this shooting range.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Soto, the, this is a project that was included in the 2018-2020 budget as a project approved by the council. Once it was funded by the council, we continued with a procurement process to find contractors to be able to construct the project. The project location is on the south side of the Los Flores Ranch property that the city owns, and so the primary, a couple of primary criteria for the selection of that particular site was, one, it is owned by the city, and so we were able to, we didn't have to go out and purchase additional land, and it's a large parcel of land that is multi, it's large enough that has multiple uses. The primary use is the future landfill site for the city. It also includes an open space, Los Flores Ranch area, and it'll include a transfer station and some other uses, so. And then the gun range is proposed to be on the far southeast side of the property. And that, so that's one primary reason. We own the land, and it fit in with the compatible uses. And then the second criteria is really to have a use that is closer for our police officers. The other options, we have a temporary option we're using right now, and that's a temporary solution that we need to find a long-term solution. And the longer-term solutions that were also available are farther outside the area, and that would require more time and travel, more overtime costs, and having our police officers farther away from the city. So that was the second reason this site was, in particular, was chosen, in that it was closer to the city and a city-owned parcel.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay, well, wait, let me just finish up. Is that fine? Are you satisfied?
Yes, I am with that one question, or with that question. May I continue with questions?
Sure.
Or, the councilmember Watson?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, okay. I also wanted to ask about the, how we were going to be working on the mitigation of the impact, the noise impact out at Los Flores Ranch. As we heard during public comment, there are people that go out there for recreational purposes, and I'd just like to get more information on that. I know that there was a report, a SEQUEL report, that was posted on the city website, but if we can just get more info on the noise mitigation part, and if we would need to make some adjustment, adjustments to the budget to further, for the mitigation of the noise.
Good evening, councilmember Soto, members of the city council. So in the Los Flores master plan that was developed and approved by the city council, there were certain areas of the park, approximately 250 acres, that were set aside for what we called municipal purposes. One of those sections was the area of where, where the range is to be located. That area is in a box canyon at the extreme south end of the park. The public, the closest the public would ever be to that location, as the crow flies, would probably be about three-quarters of a mile, if not a mile away. The way that box canyon is naturally created, I guess, is it faces out towards the freeway. So what you will hear, or rather, the sound will carry out that box canyon out towards the freeway. So the public never really gets in that area. Right now, if you go out to the ranch, the temporary facility that is being used on private property, you actually are able to hear the rounds being fired while you're on the property. This will isolate it so far away from our public space that you wouldn't be able to hear any other rounds going off, short of, obviously, individuals going beyond the park boundaries that we have out there.
Thank you. A follow-up question. How, how was that analysis conducted? That analysis that we, that people wouldn't hear the shots if they were to be walking out at Los Flores Ranch?
I don't know. There was one done specifically about the sound of the rounds going off. I think what it was, was the normal environmental review for a project like that. Sound and traffic and those kinds of things are usually included to some degree, but the access points for this particular canyon, you're talking probably, probably a good 150 to 200 feet of canyon walls around it, as you get to the top of each of the rims. So it's extremely difficult for sound to carry, not just from my personal knowledge of going out and using a firearm, but that's usually not something that carries. It usually will carry out towards the open end. So it's, well, I'm not going to say that no one will ever hear the rounds, but certainly our customers, for the park anyway, will be so far away that the rounds shouldn't be audible.
But a study was not conducted to explore that, correct?
Not that I know specifically regarded that. Mr. Ng, do you know?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, when we had performed the SEQUEL review for this project, we did not feel that a noise that was warranted, given the distance and given what was buffering between the proposed location for the shooting range and the recreational areas of Los Flores Ranch.
Would be, would we be able to do that sound analysis?
We believe that it wouldn't be necessary, given the distance.
Wait, wait, are you finished?
For now, yes.
Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
I, Mr. Posada's answered half the question that I wanted to ask in regards to, because of the way the natural surroundings... of the way the natural surrounding of that shooting range is going to be. I think that it would be good if Ms. Soto could be taken on a tour out there so she could see for herself exactly what we're talking about, you know, the mountain heights and everything. But also, I believe that's going to be a future site near it for our landfill. And so you're going to have that site, yeah, absolutely, as another buffer between the public. So I was taken out there, knowing firearms as much as I do. I was very satisfied with the location. I was very satisfied with the safety that encompassed that area, and you will not have any public access to it at all whatsoever. So I don't believe that a sound analysis is called for.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, I wondered, has anybody ever gone out there and fired a round and had some people at various distances from it, see if they could hear it?
They have near there. They have near there. But this is a much better location than what we've been doing. I don't know if Chief Hanson would like to respond to anything?
I'd be happy to respond to any specific question. I will say that the site, this particular canyon, was chosen because of its remote aspects to it. The fact that, that the surrounding canyon walls not only mitigate sound, but mitigate any danger from projectiles, and that it's facing away from anything that has to do with the park there itself, where people would be using it for recreational purposes. The only really open access into it opens out towards the freeway, where frankly, from, this is just my own experience, anecdotal, but the freeway is much more of a noise generator than, than we would be out there with, with weapons that are being discharged.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. And I completely understand the need for this training facility and how costly it can be for our department to have to drive out of city limits for these trainings. I just want to make sure that as we're preparing to, but as, as we look at the cost of this facility, that we take into mind the noise mitigation aspect of it, if there's things that we can prepare for in the event that that noise is heard by residents using Los Flores Ranch.
Yes, ma'am. I understand, we want to be good neighbors. And the last thing that we want to do is create a problem for anybody out there. But as I said, that's one of the reasons that this site was chosen specifically, because of its remote aspects. And I would be happy to provide a tour to any of the council members that would like to go out and take a look at where we're, you know, where the proposed project is. Some of you have been out there. I've been out there. We actually did some firing out there on a very limited basis a couple of years ago, see how I think things would work out. And I really feel very confident. It's one of those things, it's sort of, I think when you see where we're talking about, it's sort of intuitive that it's not going to be a problem for the, you know, the surrounding area there because of the selection of the site. As, as Councilwoman Waterfield said, it's actually buffered by the landfill as well before you get to where people would be using the park for recreational purposes. So there's a lot of stuff between where this would be going on and the problem at hand. Right now, just to underscore the necessity for the project, we are on private property right now, which a landowner's been gracious enough to let us use his property, and the neighbors are getting tired of that a little bit, and it's problematic for us. And obviously, we don't have, that could be taken away from us at a moment's notice. The other options are to go all the way north to Camp San Luis Obispo, or down to Long Poque to the academy, which those sites are limited in how much we can use them, and they're also expensive to use. So this is an opportunity we've been pursuing now for about five years to get this thing developed.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you. Chief, is the facility going to be used for big bore practice as well?
Oh, big bore practice? You mean by, like a long range, like 762 or 308 rifle?
Any of those, the sniper rifles?
Sure. We have to qualify on all the weapons. Now, that's pretty limited. It's going to be primarily pistol rounds, shotgun rounds, urban rifle rounds, 223 caliber, you know, M16, M4 variant-type weapons. But that's going to be the primary use, and then there'll be some high-power rifle fire on a limited basis for the long rifle personnel from the SWAT team.
And this might be a question more for Mr. Posada, but is, is the facility going to be utilized for shooting at the same time that people will be recreating up there as well? Will they be open at the same time?
You'd have to talk to Director Posada about that, sir. I'm not sure what hours. But I'm sure that there would be overlap there. But once again, that's one of the reasons this was selected, because of the proximity...
Thank you, members. Councilmember Cordero, members of the city council. So right now, the park is only open Thursdays through Sundays, and it's open from approximately 8:00 AM to about 7:00 PM. Again, all of our trails are concentrated, what we call the North Forty. Basically, it's everything on the Dominion to the freeway side. So it's quite a ways away. The landfill will be one of the major buffers between these two projects. The landfill is still working on their final plans, but, you know, they've just completed their new entrance work that they did. So again, what the police department's needs are, there's probably going to be some overlap. Again, I don't see a conflict. I don't see a sound conflict specifically. Well, right now, just to give you an example, our ag projects out there that we have going on with the high school students, they use a, it's called a cannon, and it blasts, a propane blast every few seconds to get rid of ground squirrels that scares them away and birds. So they're using that right now, and you can't hear that out there. I would, I would probably equate it to small arms, far as the chief was mentioning. You can't hear any of that.
Okay. Chief, is the, this isn't...
Cordero, you need to speak into your mic.
This isn't the first time this has been discussed. It was being discussed when I was still there. And there was a problem then with the, with the lead bullets, and they were talking about going to fragmentation ammunition. Is that, is that a possibility, or you...
Well, I think so, when you talk about going to frangible rounds, that's more for interior use as a rule. That's probably when they were discussing use of the, the department used to have an indoor range that we no longer have access to. And when you have indoor ranges, you have toxicity problems. It's, you want to get away from lead ammo, and you want to use frangibles whenever you can, that sort of thing. And that really doesn't apply to this particular setting here. And it would be a significant, we can research what it would cost to transition to lead-free, but there's a good lead mitigation plan in place already for this, and it would be a significant impact on the ammunition costs and whatnot to transition out, and it's really not necessary in an exterior environment like that.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Sorry. It'd be great if you can get us some information on lead-free ammunition. Given that this park is going to, this range is set to be one that is in an, like, open space, not contained, I'm concerned about the wildlife that could come in and sniff something and get contaminated and then ill.
We will research it, ma'am. We'll find out what the, it's going to be a simple enough thing to find out what the difference in price would be, you know, between operating on a lead-free basis and with the conventional ammunition. I can do that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. 3H?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 3H.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Potino?
Aye. Okay, now we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council received a presentation by Kevin Walters, PhD, president of Allen Hancock College, on the PROMISE program, which provides high school graduates with the opportunity to have their first year tuition free at the college.
You know, I try every month to put something on, on the calendar here on the agenda so that people know what's going on in the community. And I asked Dr. Walters if he would, and even brought some extra people with him, if he would do something on the PROMISE program, because I think it's really important to the, to the kid, well, just not just to the kids, to the community, everyone in the community. So, Dr. Walters, thank you for being here.
Madam Mayor, council members and staff, thank you. This is exciting, and we're glad that we're not offering a fireworks program. So we're, we're here to talk a little bit about the, the future of Santa Maria that we believe is, is, education is critical to that. And as the only provider of affordable public education, higher education in northern Santa Barbara County, we take our role very seriously in helping the community grow. I brought with me Dr. Paul Murphy, who's our vice president for social effectiveness, and also our vice president for student services, Dr. Noemi, Noemi Ronellis. They, they do all the heavy lifting on the slides you're going to see, and I'm going to ask them to speak to it. I just wanted to remind everybody of what, what the college is. We have 20,000 unique students. That equates to about 9,500 full-time equivalent students. And if you, if you look at our, at our student body of the, the entering freshmen last year, about 41% of those students came from Santa Maria. And overall, our student body of credit students is 55% from Santa Maria. So Santa Maria is the bulk of where our services are provided. And with that, I want to turn it over, and Paul Murphy's going to give you a little bit of data, and then Noemi's going to tell you about our programs, and then we'll give you a little bit of the outcomes for that, and have all requests at the end.
I'm going to give a little bit of context to the role of education in California, specifically Santa Barbara County and, and this area, so that we all kind of understand the significance of higher education. So it's, it's no mystery to anybody that we have an educational attainment challenge in our area. We have, in Santa Maria and Guadalupe, relative to the state metrics and surrounding counties, relatively low attainment of high school and college achievement. Now, what's interesting is statewide, when we look at the percentage of high school students who attend college within a year and a half after graduating, statewide, 37% of high school graduates go to a two-year college, 26% go to a four-year college. So 63% enter college within a year and a half after exiting. 57% of those that attend college go to a community college. The other 43% attend some form of a four-year institution. Now, that's statewide. When we look more locally, in Santa Barbara County, where you can see the, the arrow pointing out of there, those different shades of gray across the state and those counties show the gradation of college-going rates. Statewide, again, the college-going rate's 63%. Santa Barbara County, with that gray shaded color, it indicates that we're above 65% in the county. So we're above the state level. But what's interesting is, whereas at the state level, 37% attain, attend community college, and 26% go to a university, locally here among our high school students from the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District, 56% go to a community college, and only about 12% to UC or CSU or other four-year college right out of high school. So statewide, 57% of high school graduates go to a community, 57% of college-going students go to a community college. 80%, well, actually, over 80% of our local high school students go to a college via Allen Hancock. So the importance of Allen Hancock locally can't be understated. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Noemi to talk about the Allen Hancock PROMISE, and then I'll return with some of the data, looking at the impact of the PROMISE program on our local students.
So really, our, our goal of, of the Allen Hancock College PROMISE was to begin to change the odds for students in our community through educational access. And what that meant for us here is to create a college-going culture. We worked really close with our stakeholders, our, sorry, our K-12 partners, to ensure that we developed a four-phase approach, an integrated approach to creating this college-going culture. We knew that we could not do this alone for our community. So what we did is we developed a Bulldog Bound program, which I'll explain in a second, a Path to PROMISE, the Allen Hancock College PROMISE, and the Extended PROMISE. And our real intent of the Hancock PROMISE was to begin to create experiences for students in our K-12. We wanted to begin to expose students to careers in college early. So the Bulldog Bound program focuses on just that. We partnered with our local school district, Santa Maria Benita, to develop programs to enhance student experiences. Our K-12 partners have developed a local accountability plan, the LCAP plan, that outlines college and career readiness, and we're one of the stakeholders that assist in development and the planning of that to ensure that we're aligning these transitional phases for our students. And what we did with, with the Bulldog Bound program this last year is we brought students to our campus. We wanted students to begin to engage with our faculty and our staff, and to begin to know what the community college was, what the community college was offering. We also partnered with our, our local employers. So we partnered with Era Energy to begin to develop and connect careers to college together and create these positive experiences. Last year, we had over 6,000 elementary school students participate in our Bulldog Bound program, and our students were really excited, but it also created that first-time opportunity for them to visit our campus. The second phase of the PROMISE is the Path to PROMISE, which is really enhancing and strengthening our relationships with our K-12 partners. And we do this through a couple of ways. The first is, is we've created collaborative meetings with our high schools and our counselors, and they meet on a monthly basis to begin to identify challenges that exist within our student populations that prevent students from going to college. We've been able to implement and change a lot of policies to improve those transitions to high school. We also want to begin to prepare students for their transition. So we do this with participation in parent nights. We have higher college bootcamps at every, at different high school campuses. We provide bilingual presentations. So we're embedded in the high schools. We have staff and counselors who attend our high schools on a regular basis. We also now have our concurrent enrollment, or our dual enrollment program, that allows high school students to enroll in college classes while they're in high school. This past year, we had 2,500 students, high school students, participate in this program, which was our largest ever. And this upcoming year, we have projections of up to 3,000 students. Our third phase is actually getting students to participate in our PROMISE program. And what our PROMISE program does is it allows students, any high school student who graduates from high school and attends Allen Hancock right out of high school, to receive their first year free. Some of the benefits are they get their first year free, but they also get a lot of support with that. We've been able to align a lot of our state mandates with our PROMISE program, which we know our best practice is to improve student success and graduation. So all of our students in the PROMISE program participate in an orientation, an educational planning workshop, and we also require the students to complete the FAFSA or the Dream Act application, which will assist in maximizing their amount of financial aid. We know that finances are the largest barrier for students in our community to attend college. So we've really enhanced our outreach to promote and assist with the financial aid process. We also require students to be full-time, because we also know that full-time students tend to complete and graduate more than students who are not full-time or students who are part-time. And... And the last piece that we require students to do is to enroll in an English and math course during their first year, because those are also keystone classes that are critical for students to progress throughout their educational experience. The last phase is the Extended Promise, and the Extended Promise continues to support the student through graduation, completion of their certificate, or degree, or to transfer. So, we've developed a lot of supportive programs on our campus to continue to engage students through academic advising, academic support, tutoring, student activities, and most importantly, the development of the comprehensive education plan, so that students can continue to follow the path that they need to complete their educational goal.
So, with all the resources that we've put forward for our local community, what was the impact last year in our first year of the Promise Program? The slide here shows a couple of different data points. The dark blue colors, the 12th grade enrollments of the students at the Santa Maria Joint High School District. The lighter blue color indicates the number of those students that enrolled in the fall term right out of high school. And then the numbers that correspond with the bar there show the percentage attending Allen Hancock. And you can see a dramatic increase in fall 2018, when we implemented the Promise Program. Our going rates in fall ranged between, you know, 38% to 41%. If we went back in time, they would typically have been in those range, in that range. But immediately upon implementation of the Promise Program, we saw a large increase in the percentage of first-time high school students attending Allen Hancock. So, it had a dramatic increase in terms of access. And this year, while our fall registrations are still in progress, so we don't have official numbers yet, we know that district-wide year-to-date comparisons show an increase from 47% to 57% of our high school students already registered. And then among the students in the Santa Maria High School District, we're up in that area as well, at currently 51%.
Excuse me, one minute. Ms. Waterfield has a question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. The boundaries, Hancock boundaries, can you describe that so that the audience that's listening knows exactly what it entails?
Right. So, we have a legal district that includes San Yenés, Solvang, Bulton, Lompoc, Vandenberg, Air Force Base, Vandenberg Village, Los Alamos, Orca, Santa Maria. We actually transcend three counties. We're in a portion of Ventura, San Luis Obispo, and primarily northern Santa Barbara County. That's our legal district boundary, it's about 3,000 square miles. We also serve students from south San Luis Obispo County, primarily Nopomo and Arroyo Grande. While they aren't in our legal district boundary, given the geographic proximity, we serve a large portion of those students.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, we've seen a large impact in terms of an improvement in access, and then a fairly dramatic increase across the board in different demographic groups in terms of enrollment. We saw, for example, a 48% increase from fall 2017 to fall 2018 among low-income students. That is a huge increase in opportunity for students who otherwise would not have had the opportunity to go to college. Again, I remind you that 80, over 80% of our local students that go to a college out of high school go to Santa Maria. For most of our students, we are their initial opportunity. We also saw dramatic increases across ethnic groups and first-generation students as well, 31% increase in students whose parents, neither of whom attended college. So, the access impact was dramatic across all the different demographic groups. In terms of outcomes, as Noemi talked about earlier, it's not just about drawing students to the college, but it's about their academic success at the end of the day, that's what we're after. And we saw an increase in the units attempted and completed among low-income students, first-generation students, and all of our students. So, not only did we draw more traditionally underrepresented students, they completed, they attempted and completed more units. And we saw a dramatic increase in persistence to fall. And a lot of times, students sign up for college in the fall, they think it's for them, and for one reason or another, they realize perhaps it's a little bit more challenging than what they had anticipated. But as a result of the Promise Program, the support programs that went with it, we saw increases across the board among our different demographic groups in terms of students returning in spring 2019. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Walters.
So, this program really grew out of a conversation that we were having with the parent night. I think most of you know Larry Lehrer, who's on our Board of Trustees. He and I were at an event where we were trying to explain to a parent through a translator how they could come to Hancock. And we have plenty of resources available, and the parent was frustrated, he said, "Fill out this form, fill out that form, do this, do that," and you get in. And finally, I said, "You know, it's free." The kid was in 7th grade, "It's free, just come and we'll take care of it." And the parent was ecstatic. I mean, it was, you could see the emotion in her eyes, because as parents who don't understand the higher education system, or for many of our parents, if only half of our adults or have high school diplomas even, you know, we're not serving first-generation college students. In large part, we're serving first-generation high school students. So, here's a parent who suddenly realizes that the ticket for her children to be successful is to go to college, and it's going to be free when they get there. Now, when we walked out, if you guys know Larry, the first question he asks is, "Well, how do you plan on paying for that?" And I said, "Well, we've got five years to figure it out." And so, we started working diligently to put together a plan. What the cool part about it is, is that that student is still going to have to fill out all that paperwork we were trying to explain to them, they're still going to have to apply for financial aid that will help those students. But they know at the end of it, it's not, "Fill this out and we see what happens." They know it's free here, fill out this paperwork, and it will happen. So, we've been working with community partners, Santa Barbara Foundation, some energy companies, the hospital, Rabo Bank, Union Bank, you know, those have been our big sponsors to support the program. And we're looking to build a $10 million endowment. We're about 35% of the way there with 175 different partners that have contributed to the endowment. I think the general question that we're getting now is, is there's a lot of talk about the second year free that the legislature funded. And I'm sure you'll all be shocked to know that just because Sacramento said they did something, doesn't mean they actually did. So, when Sacramento funded the first year free, they sent us $216,000. Our costs last year were $383,000. This year, they want us to cover both years with $406,000. We feel like it's critical, given that this is sort of fungible money, that over time, if the economy goes down, we feel that'll be, you know, last in, first out idea of the legislature. We don't want to leave our students in that lurch, so we're taking a very conservative approach to this, and we're really looking to build from two sources, from our endowment and from our ongoing sources. And over the next couple of months, what we would like to be able to do is talk to the city about how this program can support the efforts that the city has made towards its youth, the youth task force that's been going on for the last three or four years, and how the city, and in other cities, we've seen the city of Los Angeles and city of Richmond, many cities have started to invest in these types of Promise Programs as a way to make sure students can go to college. Because we know what's going to happen over the next decade in this community, for good or ill, is going to cross our campus, and we need to make sure we're ready for those students, and we need to make sure the students are ready for us, so that when that student in the 5th grade starts to learn that I can go to college, and there's things I have to do to be ready to get there, that way they can know what's on the path. So, our hope is, is that over the next couple of months, we can work with City Manager Stillwell, and perhaps be able to bring a proposal to the council for the city of Santa Maria to participate with us, and really make the Hancock Promise the signature, the signature program that it is. In fact, this was, Noemi and I went to San Antonio back in February. This was named one of the top 10 projects in the country. We didn't get number one, because we didn't have our data in yet, but next year, we might get number one. But we're one of the, this is actually getting a lot of nationwide attention. We'll be actually speaking at a conference in September, October, in San Francisco, a national conference, to help other colleges figure out how they can develop something similar. So, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Moats?
Dr. Walters, is this Promise Program available to students who don't live within the legal boundaries of the Allen Hancock College?
It is not, it is not. We had to, for a couple of reasons. One, we feel like we're a community college, and we should be serving our community. Secondly, there's really not a way for us to manage how many people would come from outside if that was the case, so.
One of the big expenses in going to college is finding a place to rent. Are there any programs to establish dormitories for students?
We do not, we're having conversations about housing in general. So, our board just passed a new policy that would allow private developers to come to the college and become listed as preferred providers at the college, and there's a set of criteria that they have to meet. The primary problem that our students who come from out of the area face is separability in leases. So, if three people rent an apartment, all three of them are individually and jointly responsible for the lease. So, one student leaves, then another student leaves, and now the third kid is left holding the bag for the whole rent. And that becomes a huge financial strain. So, the primary thing that we want from these developers, and we've gotten good initial feedback, is that they would actually rent to college students only within the unit, and if they would allow, if one student leaves, that they would allow another student to plug in, so that one student isn't held with the bill for three or four other students that left.
Is there any space on the campus to build on-campus housing?
We have, we do have space for on-campus housing. We went out two years ago with an RFP to do a public-private partnership, where a provider would come in and build residence halls. This is a common occurrence at large universities. UCSB has a setup like this, where the developer comes in, builds on UCSB's campus, operates the facility for UCSB, and after some set of time, like 50 years, essentially the property and the building reverts back to the university. Housing is such a critical issue for our families. I think you'll probably see over the next year, a more broad conversation on our campus about how we can help alleviate the housing problem for our local students. We're not, we're not trying to do something where we start trying to recruit students from out of state. We really want to find a solution for our students. We have, what's, what are the percentage of our students who are housing insecure? So, somewhere 5% to 10% are housing insecure already. And then you look at, I mean, a lot of our, you know, when we have students who are living in a home, and we know in Santa Maria that sometimes a home has two or three families living in it, that's not an environment for a student to be able to successfully study and advance. So, you'll see us looking into that over the next year or two.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just want to comment, Dr. Walters, I think it's fantastic what you've done and offered to these young people, particularly the young people in our community. For the last 35 years, I would speak at the local junior high, and when I started doing that, I would always ask the question, "How many of you are going to college?" And back then, two hands, three hands would go up, and now, pretty routinely, they just about all go up. So, there's a huge move to give these kids access, and I think it's just great that we're able to be on the tip of the sword here that brings this program forward, so.
And I think, you know, thank you for that. And if we're going back to, for Dr. Moats' point, the, this slide, when you look at the low-income students, that the increase in low-income students, it's not just, you're right, that those extra costs that go along with it, which include the books and the transportation, when they get on campus and then they get involved in our wraparound services, and especially in Noemi's area, where they can then help the students get a Pell Grant, help the students get a reasonable federal loan if they need it, to help those students have all the resources they can, and then progress. That having, the requirement of the students to take 12 units is really critical to the success of us. We don't want students, you know, dinking around with six units and nine units at a time they'll never finish. We need them, we need them to finish in a timely manner, and a timely manner for us is two and a half to three years. And then we face the challenge, once they've done that, we face the challenge of where do they transfer to? Because there's not really a local option for them to transfer. So, you've seen, hopefully you've seen our commentaries in the paper about the need for four-year degrees at the baccalaureate level. The University of Laverne has two cohorts starting in the fall, actually starting next month, in public administration and business, I believe are the two cohorts. They have about 50 students will be joining that to get their bachelor's degrees. But, you know, it's difficult for our students, so we want, but we want them to be prepared so that when their opportunity to get to their four-year degree comes, that they're ready to go.
Ms. Soto.
I just want to thank Allen Hancock College and Dr. Walters for your leadership. I'm a proud Bulldog, and I know that if it wouldn't have been for Hancock, I probably would not have received my four-year degree. So, I'm so proud to have Hancock here being part of our community, and I look forward to seeing how many more students you all help succeed. So, thank you for the work that you do.
Well, thank you very much. You know, and I think when you state how so many of our parents don't even have a high school diploma, so the disparity there, and for the kids to be able to go into the school and to know that there is a future for them, and Hancock is such a gem. It's such a gem that we have here. So, thank you to all of you.
Thank you for having us.
Could you say something about some of your certi, and I know this isn't with the Promise, but some of your programs, like your welding programs where you can get certificates?
So, we are, we have, there, we have multiple programs that offer certificates. Our welding program is one of our most popular. We do a machine technology program that gets used by, you know, companies like Helical, Alan Johnson Racing, you know, a lot of our students end up there. One of our, one of our best programs for training students in the vocational education field is PCPA. The last two years, when you go see a PCPA show, all of those sets, all the lighting, all the sound is done by students. The last two years, every single one of those students got a job in the industry. They're in very high demand, so that's a good, we have some supporters here. Gail was here earlier, so, but you know, that, those are strong programs. And then, of course, this past year, I happened to sit on the Board of Marion Hospital, and they were short nurses due to a whole kind of a perfect storm of nursing vacancies. Marion Hospital hired every single one of our graduates with one exception. And they would've hired the other one, but she took a job somewhere else. So, every one of our, every one of last year's graduating class for nurses is working at Marion Hospital or Arroyo Grande Hospital right now. So, that's, so, you know, one of our themes is that we're changing the odds. And I'll close with this, because I know you've got a lot to do, but, you know, Manuel Pastors, a demographer from USC, and I've seen him speak a couple of times, and he said, you know, "We spend a lot of time celebrating people who overcome the odds. We're not spending enough time talking about how we change the odds." And that's what we started talking about at Hancock, that's where the Promise comes from, that's where all of our student support services come from, is we want to make it so that the kids in our community have the same access that most of us sitting in this room have, that we're removing barriers and changing the odds for our whole community, not just trying to do it one person at a time, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation this evening. How many places can you go and get an applause?
Not the college.
Thank you. The next order of business is the annual July appointments. Madam Kirk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider making appointments to the Block Grants Advisory Committee and the Library Board of Trustees and direct staff to continue advertising the various boards and committees that still have vacancies.
Okay. Block Grants Advisory Committee?
Okay. I'm going to present both of them separately. So, I'll begin with the Block Grants Advisory Committee, which has five terms to fill, ending in July 2022. Staff received applications from incumbents Greg Burtnett- Staff received applications from incumbents Greg Burtnett, Rosalie Marquez, Tim Seifert, and Jason Temora, and one new application from Luz Maria Cabral. James Thomas, previously appointed by Councilmember Waterfield, has chosen not to reapply. The following nominations, following the nominations, the appointments are to be made by Mayor Patino with ratification by the City Council to fill those terms, ending in July 2022.
Okay. We could do those all at once, can't we, on the nominations? Okay. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to nominate Rosalie Marquez. She brings to it several years of seniority doing the same thing, and obviously some stability to the program itself.
Dr. Moats?
I'd like to nominate Jason Temora, who also has experience and will do a good job.
Councilmember Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to nominate Luz Maria Cabral.
Okay. Councilmember Waterfield?
I would like to nominate Greg Burtnett.
Okay. And I will nominate Tim Seifert to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. I accept these nominations and make the motion to appoint these nominees to the Block Grants Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Are any of the people that have been nominated, are they, any of them here? Oh, okay. Would you like to introduce us?
Sure. Luz Maria, would you like to come up and say hello?
Just wanted to say thank you. I've been following the City Council this year, and it's very interesting, so now I'm excited to join the block committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Next up, we'll have the City Council have the opportunity to appoint one member to the Library Board of Trustees for a term of three years, ending in July 2022. The board currently has two vacancies. One was received, one application was received from incumbent Helen Galvan. Incumbent Chris Gallus has chosen not to reapply. Madam Mayor Patino is to make one appointment with ratification by the City Council.
And I would, I'll make the motion to appoint Helen Galvan to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
So I'd like to thank all of those who volunteer for these boards, because they do take a lot of time and energy, but, boy, they're very well worth it. People learn a lot, so thank you. And we will continue to advertise until all the remaining vacancies are filled. Our next item is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to a general plan land use policy map amendment for the Northman Residential Project on San Maria Way between Sunrise Drive and Dolphin Street and the Northman Residential Tentative Track Map, Track 6018, to develop 58 single-family residences, a basin, a public open space on 13.2 acres in the planned development of single-family residential districts.
And the staff report is to be made by Mr., by the Community Development Director, Mr. Ing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a request for a general plan amendment and zone change in a tentative track map. The project is called Northman Residential. The applicant is Eric Northman. This is a slide of the project site. Again, it's about 13.2 acres, and it's nudged in between the First Baptist Church, Valley Christian Academy to the north. There's an existing residential neighborhood to the south. It's bounded by Santa Maria Way to the west. There's also a drive-in movie theater that's located to the south as well. The proposed general plan amendment is to go from lower-density residential, four units per acre, to low-density residential, five units per acre. So it's just a change in one unit per acre within the single-family residential designation. The corresponding zoning is to go from planned development residential R1, minimum 10,000 square foot lots, to planned development R1, 6,000 square foot lots. This would be in characteristics with the residential neighborhood to the south, which has a designation of R1 6,500. The neighborhood to the south, also known as Rolling Hill Estates, has 68 homes on about 14.9 acres, and is at a density of 4.6 units per acre. By contrast, a Northman Residential proposes 58 homes on 13.2 acres, and this calculates to 4.4 units per acre, again, comparable to the neighborhood to the south. The following are some slides of the area, and this is Santa Maria Way adjacent to the project site. This is the existing entrance called Dolphin Street and the left turn lane that turns into the neighborhood located to the south. Again, this is another image of Dolphin Street, looking at Rod Drive. And this is an existing street of the neighborhood to the south, looking north at the project site. There's a kind of a cul-de-sac at the end of the street for vehicles to turn around. And this is another look at the property from Rod Drive, and another view of the property towards Santa Maria Way, and another view of the site from Diane Drive. This is the proposed layout of the subdivision. There are 58 lots accommodating 58 single-family homes. There is a retention basin located west of the site as you come in, and there is a new proposed entrance into this neighborhood, so that there are two entrances into this neighborhood, as well as a neighborhood to the south. This is a slide showing a cross-section of some homes. And I call out a couple of lots, Lot 49, Lot 47, and Lot 32. These lots have dimensions that are slightly shorter than the required dimensions of those lots, particularly the corner lots are required to have a width of 70 feet. And these lots have dimensions that are at 69 feet and at 65 feet. And because of that, the tentative track map comes before the council for your approval. These are the proposed floor plans and elevations for the homes in this neighborhood. They include a farmhouse style, cottage style, prairie style. This is a floor plan for one of their plans. And these are Plan 2 elevations. These homes have, some of them have two-car garages, some of them have three-car garage More elevations, this is for Plan Number 3, and this is a two-story. So there are a combination of single-story and two-stories. And these are the floor plans for Plan Number 3. You can see that there are, there's a two-car garage, and then there's another single-car garage for this floor plan. This is a concept of the landscape, landscape plan for the basin area. There is a tot lot, and that's part of this basin area. So there's a basin lawn area, and you can see the small tot lot area on the east side of this basin area. I have some slides here regarding traffic encirculation. When this went before the Planning Commission back in May and June, we had residents from living in a neighborhood to the south come out with traffic concerns. There was a traffic study that was conducted for this project, and David Baez from Engineering is here, and I believe the traffic engineer from, that prepared the study is also here in the audience for a Q and A later with technical questions. But we have some slides here that show the stacking distance on Dolphin Street. And in short, the, with the project, the traffic study indicates that at peak hours, the stacking would be a maximum of three vehicles in this case. This is an image showing the left turn lane going into Dolphin Street. And again, there was an analysis of the intersection as part of the traffic study. This is a slide showing the slight distance visibility. We've received some comments and concerns about the ability to make left turns out. And this is a slide showing the, showing how far you would be able to see from Dolphin Street, looking north at Santa Maria Way and looking south at Santa Maria Way, indicated by the blue line. Again, this is a snapshot of looking south from what you can see on Santa Maria Way. This is staff's recommendation that the City Council accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and take the following actions. Adopt a resolution for the general plan land use policy map amendment for the Northman Residential Project on Santa Maria Way between Sunrise Drive and Dolphin Street. Introduce an ordinance for first reading, and continue to the next meeting for second reading and adoption, amending the zoning map for the Northman Residential Project, and adopt a resolution approving the Northman Residential Tentative Track Map, Track 6018. David Baez is here from Engineering. Neta is here. She's a project manager for this project. And I believe representatives for the applicant and the applicant are also in the audience and available to provide additional information. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Ing right now?
I do.
Ms. Waterfield?
In regards to the traffic, looking on Attachment B, where we see the site plan, it looks like there is an out, an out going onto Santa Maria Way. Is that going to be coming in as well? Is that going to be egress and outgress on Santa Maria Way?
Yes. Let me find the slide showing the map. Yeah, this one. So yes, there is an additional entrance into the project site. It is intended to be right in and right out.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Moats?
Yeah. Mr. Ing, I took a look at this site last weekend, and it has a very complicated topography. This is not a flat site. It's going to require, what seems to me, an awful lot of grading. Is it going to be graded to the point where the whole thing is level? Or will there be, the elevation on the houses to the south be higher than the houses to the north? And it will be, will it be graded so it's on the same elevation as the Rolling Hills project to the south? Or will there be large retaining walls?
Mayor Patino, if I'm --
Mr. Baez?
Councilman, yeah, great observation. The hill, the site is, will be topographed. It's a, the percentage coming into, you'll have the existing roadways that are, that will hold, and as you go into the site, it'll come down at about an 8% grade. On the north side, if we can go to the, to the, to the area, now? Actually, go back one.
The area?
Yeah, just the over, yeah. So there will be walls, there will be walls on the north side along the Valley Christian Academy. The greatest, the greatest size of the walls will be on the northeast corner, about a 15-foot wall, because again, is if you bend out to the site, it is, the grade differential is considerable. It's not, it's not going to be a flat site, so there will be a grade. As you leave the subdivision and head to the north, you'll be going down at 8% slope. But as you move towards the west, it'll gradually level out. So there will be some walls with the site design.
Now, I was reading some of the complaints that we got at the beginning of the session. One of the complaints is that the houses in the subdivision to the south that face the north have nice views. Will those views be blocked by the houses that will be in the new housing project?
They'll still have, because, as you mentioned earlier, there is considerable grading. So the houses that are located at the end of the cul-de-sac, you'll have a differential. And I don't know if we have a cross-section, but the differential will be, it'll, there'll be a differential where the neighbors in the new subdivision will not be looking in the neighbor's yard. It'll be to the contrary. The neighbors in the existing subdivision would be able to look down, so there won't be, it'll be a difference, it'll be a considerable difference in elevation.
They won't use their views?
I can't, it'll be the roof line. It'll be the roof line. It won't be the entire blockade of the views to the north.
Well, that's the concern that they have. They have a view now. They don't want to look at a house and the roof of another house.
It'll, I don't, I don't believe that it'll be as considerable as it's, as the thought may be. And I apologize, I don't, I don't think we have a cross-section of it, but it's, it'll sit low enough, because what you'll be doing is you'll be going into the new subdivision at a grade, going down, and as you come into the cul-de-sac, you'll have to come up. And so it'll, not to sound, it, almost like sitting in a, in a, not in a hole, but in a lower elevation. It's, a good example would be, oh, let's see here, almost like, like the houses on the ends, where it'd be almost, it'll, it'll just be very, very little. It won't be considerable.
Well, if you could see the Napuma foothills before, will you be able to see them afterwards?
You should be able to. You should be able to.
I think we sort of would like to know yes or no on that, not if it should be, but...
And I wish I could, I wish we had a, had a slide that gives you the cross-section at the end of the cul-de-sac, but it'll...
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Ing right now, or Mr. Baez?
Just, actually, Mayor, I had the same question that Dr. Moats had, and I think it's been answered as good as it's going to get answered here for right now.
Did you have any questions?
I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I know that there was a lot of concern about traffic, and I know that we conducted, that you all conducted a traffic study. I'm just looking at these pictures, and as, as people are making turns onto Santa Maria Way, will the traffic during peak hours cause, will it make it difficult for them to make in, making, for them to make certain turns?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want me to answer? The, and I'm looking for a nod from the residents, because there wasn't a time, there wasn't a timestamp on the picture, but I believe, correct me if I'm wrong with the nod, that the picture, that the photo was taken in the evening time during the highway drive-in?
I'm sorry.
All right. So the photo that was taken, was it taken in the evening or morning?
Well, there was a couple, the ones in the morning during the swampy hours, the others in the evening during the drive-in.
Yeah. We, what, you know, when we get people from the audience speaking, I'll have you speak in the podium and whoever can answer that question. Thank you. If you'd like to come up, you can answer it now.
Good evening. Madeleine Nato, 18-year resident of Rolling Hills Estate. The pictures were given to me by some of the neighbors, and so my understanding is that a few of them were taken in the morning, Sunday morning, for, I guess it was during the swampy hours, and then a few others were taken during the evening driving hours. And the drive-in is Monday through Sunday. I think it's seven days a week, whereas the swampy's Sunday mornings.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Madam Mayor, we do have the traffic consultant here, so if he can elaborate...
Okay. I just wanted, any questions of Mr. Ing or Mr. Baez?
Just one more.
Okay. Dr. Moats?
Yeah. If you're trying to exit this project, you only have one option, is to turn right. But if you don't want to go to Dolphine Street or whatever it is, can you turn right onto Santa Maria Way? And let's say you want to go the other way. How far do you have to go down before you can make a U-turn and come back?
If you're leaving.
Sunrise. Yeah.
You can make a U-turn at Waller. Go to that road.
Yes.
Madam Mayor and Dr. Moats, as far as a legal U-turn is concerned, I would think that you can make a right turn onto Santa Maria Way and at the intersection with either Sunrise or Waller Drive, be able to make a U-turn.
So when the people pull out of the First Baptist Church, they go either way, right? Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So is the applicant here, Mr. Ing? Okay. So would the applicant like to make any comments? I will, I will.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, Brian Schwartz from Planning Concepts. Before I begin, I would like to introduce the applicant, Mr. Eric Northman. We also have our project engineer, Russ Garrison, from Bethel Engineering, who's here this I'm going to try to answer a couple of the questions with regards to the grading and the views. I'd like to go through a quick summary of the process that we've gone through and then come back and answer that question. When Mr. Northman first approached us, he wanted to design a subdivision that was upscale and consistent and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, particularly the Rolling Hills neighborhood. As you heard in the presentation from staff, this project is less dense than the project to the, to the south. After we submitted our application, we had a committee meeting with the residents. We showed them the plans. We told them about the upcoming SEQA document. We heard their concerns about the traffic. There was not traffic state required for this project from staff based on their anticipated levels of service. Nonetheless, Mr. Northman conducted a traffic study. The results of the study, particularly at Dolphine and Santa Maria Way, is existing level of service is B. With the project, it's B. And with the cumulative build-out of the city, it's B. It does not change. We had another meeting with the community to discuss the results of the traffic study, and we still heard their concerns. We redesigned the subdivision to put in the additional access point off of Santa Maria Way. We talked with the public works department. We said, you know, we are open to different options for this access point. The determination from the public works department was due to the potential conflicts of the turn-in movements and mainly based on the levels of service that are very good at the intersections and the overall dynamics of that area, that they did not recommend doing additional left turn in or left turn out. They recommended a right turn in and right turn out only. We had a study session with the planning commission. Mr. Shell was there. He discussed all of the dynamics of the intersection, how it operates efficiently. He can probably elaborate on all that this evening, too. At our first planning commission hearing, there were still concerns from the residents about not just the level of service, but about the safety of the intersection. This included the queuing, the stacking in the turn lanes, the site distances, the, what else did, oh, the speeds. They were concerned about that there were high speeds. They were concerned about the accident rates. There was a supplemental traffic analysis done for that. The conclusions of that report were, in all of those categories, they were either at or mostly below the thresholds, normal thresholds, for that type of study. Again, Mr. Shell can comment probably more, elaborate more on that. At the last planning commission meeting, we went to, presented all the information. And I'll just say one more thing about the traffic. There was also, again, concerns about the swap meet. Mr. Baez went out on the morning of the swap meet for two hours. I believe it was on Father's Day morning, so he took his Father's Day out of his morning, bless his heart, and went out there to monitor the traffic. And the results of that was, basically, there was not a huge queue of cars at all blocking the intersection or otherwise. He can elaborate on that, too. So in summary, and as presented by the staff, and in the staff report, and in tonight's presentation, this project is very consistent with the adjacent subdivision as it was intended to be designed, is an upscale, modern version of it. Based on professional expert opinion, multiple studies, site visits, there are no traffic impacts. There may be, you will hear that there are traffic impacts, and there may be a perception of traffic impacts. And what everyone perceives traffic is a little bit different. But based on standards and methodology and accepted thresholds, there are no traffic impacts. The applicant has moved through this process with a sense of collaboration, with cooperation, with problem solving. And that was recognized by the planning commission and also publicly by some of the Rolling Hills residents. And as such, the planning commission provided a five, a unanimous recommendation for approval. We've reviewed all the conditions of approval. We agree with them. And because of all of the, the studies, the recommendations from your staff, the planning commission, the subdivision, we are hoping that you'll approve the project tonight, too. With regards to the grading, the slope is, does slope down quite precipitously, as Council Member Moats has indicated. Will some of the grades be level? At some places, they will. Will a view be blocked? It is, it is, I'm going to say, yes, it will. Because you have certain houses that will be at grade level. And then at other places, they drop very precipitously. There is not just an even grade across the entire site. There will be stepped lots, as Mr. Baez mentioned, that they will step down. And so in some places, there will be some views that get blocked. And in other places, in the majority of the site, very little. If you would like further information about the grading and how it steps down or any retaining walls, our engineer is here this evening. We're available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Schwartz? Dr. Moats?
Yeah, Brian, the houses that would potentially block the view, has there been any attempt to make those one-story rather than two-story homes?
I looked at the, I looked at the letter that was provided to you earlier in your packet. That particular, that particular lot has a one-story lot adjacent to it. So their, their view looks to the northwest, and as the site drops down, there may, there may be some houses that hinder that view, but mostly it is across the street. And then the, the site drops down quite steeply. They will probably still have their view right out their front window. Directly to the north, there would be a house right next to them, also a one-story with the required setbacks.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Schwartz? Okay, thank you. Mr. Ing, is the traffic study person here?
He's in the audience.
Okay. Oh, that's you. Okay. Okay, so, did you have any questions of the person that did the traffic study? No?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to hear your report in regards to what you found out on this traffic study. And we did get some pictures in regards to the stacking up going into the drive-in for the
Good evening. I'm Scott Shell with Associated Transportation Engineers. And my firm prepared the original traffic study for the project that Brian talked about, as well as a supplemental traffic study that was published after the planning commission hearing and some of the questions that were raised. So the first traffic study looked at operations with the entire corridor and did focus on the Dolphine-Santa Maria Way intersection. It included new traffic counts in the morning peak hour, which is 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., as well as a look at the afternoon period, which is 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. I did augment that with some additional data that the city had collected for their traffic count program, where they put the tubes up across the road so you can see the 24-hour volumes on an hourly basis. As Brian had sort of summarized, our study found that everything worked at good levels of service, level of service B, and would continue to do so with the project, with the new project added. We did look at an alternative access that included the new punch-out on the Santa Maria Way. You would still be able to connect to Dolphine Street. So if you wanted to go left, you would just come down to Dolphine and make a left at that intersection. So you're not precluded from coming down. The supplemental analysis got into more detail, as we heard, about queuing, safety, and delays. And so as part of our study, the count firm we use actually uses a camera. And so they take a video of the intersection. And from that information, we found that the queues at the approaches were either one or two cars. So for the left turn coming in, it was two cars. To the left turn going out, it was two cars. I spent an hour there, come to the hearing, and I found the same thing. I was basically there about 4:30. I stayed till about quarter after 5:00, at the same kind of numbers, you know, one to two cars in queue, the delays turning out about seven to 10 seconds. So consistent findings with the original study, the supplemental, and today's observations. We did a speed survey. Speeds are a little higher on the 85th percentile than the speed limit. The speed limit's 45 there, and the 85th speeds were 50 and 47. The average speeds were about 45. With respect to the information that was submitted, you know, I wasn't out there during the swap meet, but I can tell you, I know they charge $2. And so if you're taking money from a car, I know that you can only get about 300 cars an hour through that person taking the money. So there could be some operational constraints with how they're accepting money, how they're getting cars into the swap meet that caused that little blip on Sunday mornings. All those pictures look like they were pretty much in the morning on Sunday, most of the same cars. So that would be my take on it. Mr. Baez was out there, didn't see that phenomenon, so maybe it was a hot day, popular day that happened for that particular phenomenon. But none of our studies out there observed that. And in terms of the evening hour, I did look at that data I mentioned that the city collected that shows the hourly volumes. And for that evening swap meet period, the traffic on Santa Maria Way right here at Dolphine was about 50% of what happens at between 5:00 and 6:00. So traffic from 7:00 to 8:00 goes down about half of what we'd see in a normal rush hour. So I think those are some of the key findings, and I'm here for questions.
Any questions? Dr. Moats?
If you wanted to exit the new project with that right in and right out, but you wanted to turn left and make an illegal left-hand turn, is there a median in Santa Maria Way to prevent you from doing that?
There will be. I think one of the conditions in the design did call for, excuse me, a median to be installed in front of the right turn and out pocket. So you would have a median there.
So you really don't want people making illegal left-hand turns there, huh?
You know, there's a proximity to the Waller Street intersection. I mean, this thing was originally designed, if you go back, it was only supposed to have access from the south. So there wasn't even going to be a connection originally to Santa Maria Way because arterial management. You said Santa Maria Way is an arterial, it's, you know, it's a pretty good clip on the road. So introducing friction points and turn points is not something the city wanted to do. There was a lot of discussion with the neighbors, and we did at the end look at as an alternative in the study. I think the, like I said, trying to get a left turn channelization in with the spacing at Waller, now that this one and then down to Dolphine, we did not recommend that. We recommended a right turn in and out. You know, particularly when we had the good levels of service at Dolphine, you know, we estimated between eight and 10 cars an hour might come down from the new subdivision to use that intersection to turn left, and found that it had plenty of capacity during the peak hour periods to handle those flows. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I know, I drove that, too. And coming out of, out of the, off the street, the cars come by pretty fast. They're, I didn't have a timer with me, but I would, I would certainly think they were doing probably better than 55 coming down there. Anyway, I'd like to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Staff received pre-written communications from residents of the Rolling Hills Estates from Madeline, Madilin, I can't say it, Madeline Naito, expressing concerns about traffic onto Santa Maria Way from Dolphine, and questions about the accuracy of the traffic study. From Kurt Garcia, requesting consideration be given to lowering the grade of the project on the south side of the project to be lower than the north side of Rolling Hills Estates. And from Robert and Donna Viadella, with a number of concerns, which include the traffic safety, entry and exit, Santa Maria Way and Dolphine Street not connecting to the development to Rolling Hills Estates, restricting traffic from the Rolling Hills Estates during construction, and connecting to the existing water supply lines, which will reduce water flow and pressure. Copies of these communications were previously emailed to the city council, as well as provided to you on the dais this evening.
And we have how many requests to speak?
Eight.
Eight? Okay.
I'm just giving all of those. I didn't, I think they're all for this item.
Okay. Yes. David Campbell, followed by Robert Viadella, followed by Donna Viadella. David Campbell? Oh.
All right. First off, I'd like to thank the council for the veterans. I thought that was real good. I kind of thought I'd shine a little. I probably am impacted as much as anyone from this development to the north of us because I'm on Cobal Lane, and I back on, I back up to the new construction. My house is the fourth one on Cobal that faces the development. I might find you tell literally 15 years ago, I had a chance to participate in buying that property, and I declined because I thought it was too expensive, one thing or another. But so I'm not, one of the things that I thought my interest in is that I'm all in favor of a gentleman developing the property. It's the Cobal. He bought it in good faith, and he's developed it. I am absolutely positive that he needs to have access to that project separate from where I live. And not only does it need access, it needs turnout lanes and streetlights. Because that traffic on that road is a lot faster than what people leave, and people returning into the college, the rehite, the church at church time, and very few people in Santa Maria pay any attention, whatever, to the speed limit and also to stop signs. So with that in mind, I have no objections to him developing this with one exception. Don't ask me how this happened, but my lot drains to the north. Don't ask me how this happened, but my lot drains to the north, halfway. My roof drains to the north on the north side. On the south side, it drains to the south. And when they built the concrete and locked fence along there between my property and, at that time, was a field, they provided slits in the concrete where my water would drain through into that property. Looking at that map, if that's a direct, if that's a reflection of there's a green, a slight green belt next to my property onto that new property, then that's enough for my lot to drain. But I'm very serious about, I don't want it blocked, of course, because I don't want the water backing up into my house, and that's the only way out for my water is they put slits in the fence, Miss Scott, where you block wall, for the water to drain out. I don't know whose bright idea that was, but it's held together as long as we don't get heavy rain. When we get heavy rain, I have to provide for ways to get it out. And so, that's my only complaint with the developer, is to make sure that there's a way for my water to drain to the north of my property. And I doubt that anybody could ever, has ever noticed these slits in the wall, but that's it. Other than that, he has the right to do it in favor of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
The only other thing, or hope that it doesn't develop, would be the dust during construction. That dirt up there, if you drive across it, it blows.
Thank you very much for your comments.
The city has adequate control over putting water on the roads during construction.
Thank you. Robert Viadella, followed by Donna Viadella, followed by Rochelle Rose.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to say a few words here. That we've, you probably know already that you've got this, you've got an email on those. This is the second part. Donna will take care of the first. My, I've got three bullet points here. One is on the restricted use of the existing roads in Rolling Hills Estates. This would be during the construction. The existing streets in Rolling Hill Estates should not be used for construction traffic during a Northman project construction. Northman New Santa Maria Way right in and right out should be built prior to the home building activity to provide the construction traffic access during the entire project buildup. We are concerned about the traffic, noise, and dust in the air and debris on the streets during different stages of construction. Again, a separate access would reduce congestion and complaints if alternative, if an alternate road were available in the early stages of construction and a permanent second access road included in the final plan. The vibration of soil compactors and rollers on new roads and homesites can cause cracking and other damage to our existing homes. Please make sure that the precautions are taken so existing homes are not disrupted. Next bullet point is existing Rolling Hills Estate underground utilities. And my question is, will our existing underground utilities support 58 new residences? Our existing domestic water supply lines in the neighborhood are already strained. Water pressure drops at times, and the flow is also reduced. I understand that the new tie-ins will be necessary from time to time during construction. I hope that our neighbors will, that the neighbors will be notified in advance so we can make alternate plans during the interruptions. And the last bullet point is future property development and concern for safe, for traffic safety. The Northman property and other property development in Santa Maria will continue to impact key intersections that will only get more congested. We hope that the City of Santa Maria and the Santa Barbara County will continue to identify and improve the dangerous traffic problems. We are all counting on you to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Viadella, followed by Rochelle Rose, followed by Jim Heron.
First of all, good evening, and thank you, Mayor Pantano, and the City Council. I just wanted to say that, first of all, as I was listening tonight, I think that really to clarify a lot of things, it would have been nice to have 3D technology with our, what we have today. I can't understand why that's not a visual for us to see, and then also, like, maybe a mock-up model of this project. Most developments have that when they're selling their homes, and I think that that would show the difference in the grading and all that stuff and have better clarification. And then, I just wanted to say that a lot of the traffic studies, the two I think that were done, they weren't during peak times, and I can't understand why they didn't do a Sunday and all day. We have two daycare facilities in this area, and then within our meeting that we had, we had, between the second and third meeting, there were two accidents, major accidents in that area. So, these studies are just incorporating what's now, not another 48 homes with two to three cars. So, it's really, safety is huge here. I think that's important to address. I'd like to see, like, for just clarification, just see those dimensions, you know, a visual. It would be so much clearer than guessing and saying, well, somewhat, or maybe, you know, it just doesn't seem fair. There's been plenty of time to have that happen, especially with our high technology today. I think that we're going to have to see Santa Maria Way decrease the 45-speed limit with all this happening. We're also going to get the DMV traffic. I mean, it's just going to be more and more this way. Another thing, I just can't understand why Rolling Hills can't continue to be their own entity, and the Northman project be their own entity. We can continue to have that cul-de-sac the way it is. He said that he owned about a couple of feet in the beginning of that meeting, the first meeting, I believe, or the second meeting, and it seems to me that there's fire hydrants on each cul-de-sac, and there needs to be a turnaround for the fire department and stuff like that, and access to those fire hydrants. So, I think an easement. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Rochelle Rose, followed by Jim Heron, followed by Carol La Bastida.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Rochelle Rose, and I work for the Santa Barbara Museum of Natural History, and I'm here speaking on behalf of our President and CEO, Luke Swetland. The Santa Barbara Museum of Natural History is pleased to see the Northman property project plan come to final approval. This property was left by George Northman, which is Eric Northman, in the plaid shirt here, his father, who passed away in 1977. That's 42 years ago. Eric's father, Mr. George Northman, left the land to his family, to Eric, his son, and to his sister, as well to four charities, and our museum is one of the charities. And these charities were very important to George Northman's life. The Museum of Natural History, the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden, Star King School for the Ministry, and the Unitarian Society. All of these nonprofits submitted letters of support to the Planning Commission, and I assume that you would have had copies of those, so I have copies if you're willing to accept those. We'd like to acknowledge our gratitude to Eric Northman and to his brother-in-law, Keith. His sister has deceased during these 40 years, for their dedication and hard work in honoring his father's wishes that this property in Santa Maria would help his favorite charities. Over the decades, the museum and other charities have shared in the property expenses in keeping up the property and moving it towards its sale. The Museum of Natural History, as you probably know, does not just serve Santa Barbara, but also the region, the nation, and the world with our scientific research and education. We host 20,000 schoolchildren annually who visit the museum with their elementary schools. Many are from Santa Maria schools, and they do not pay anything. The museum is also an employer of 150 people at our museum and C Center. We are greatly aware of the need for housing for our employees and their families in the city where they work. We want to thank you very much for your kind attention and speedy approval, so that this project and Mr. Northman's charitable intent could be realized. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Heron, followed by Carol La Bastida, followed by Monica Loetz.
Zoning is a promise, and it's not being kept in this instant. Our view's going to be ruined. I've heard people say that, oh, we try to make it look just like the existing homes. No way. These are two-story homes. I don't, make a guess, what's it going to cost us in property values? $20,000, $40,000? I don't know. And also regarding the proposed right-in, right-out street, it's better than nothing, but personally, I think a lot of people just do a U-turn in front of the school, you know, if they want to go left on that one. And finally, I think it's just irrelevant, this talk about what charity got to do with my property values being ruined by this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing.
Sure.
I'd like to see how many of my neighbors are here today.
Oh, my gosh.
We're all concerned about this.
Thank you. Carol La Bastida, followed by Monica Loetz, followed by Madalena Nieto.
Thank you. Good evening. I just want to say, I bought my home at Rolling Hills many years ago for the quaintness that it is, the quietness, it's just so peaceful there. Now, if you're going to open up Rod and you're going to open up Diane Lane, that's going to bring in so much more traffic to us, and I did not pay for that. If they want to have their project, if they want to build their homes, go ahead and build your homes, but don't use our roadways. Find a way to get, make a right, make a left turn. If you saw the traffic, you haven't seen it at its highest. There is no school now. You know, we don't have Valley Christian open, we don't have Ragetti open, we don't have any of the schools open right now. So, the traffic, you know, project that you did is not really correct. So, I would like, if they want to do their project, do not open Rod or Diane. That is going to bring more traffic into our Rolling Hills, and I did not pay for that extra traffic. I bought my home there, and I want to keep it there, and I want to keep it just the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Loetz, followed by Madalena Nieto.
Hi, good evening. I have a couple of things to say about the traffic study. The traffic study, I am one of the daycare providers in the neighborhood. I live on Cobal Lane that backs up to the project. I have five to six cars every morning come in and leave through Dauphine, and in the evening, come in and leave through Dauphine. That study on that Wednesday morning was done while I was out of town on a family emergency, so those cars were not involved in that study. The Father's Day study also is not a good representation of the traffic during that time of the swap meet, because if, I mean, who really wants to go to the swap meet as a Father's Day excursion on Father's Day? I wouldn't want to if I was a father, that's for sure. Most people would be out for breakfast or something like that. School is not in session right now. It was not in session during the time of the study, and so I do also believe that the study should be involved or done during school hours. The drive-in is also a problem. I came home one night from, I was in Napa, came home one night, the Toy Story and, I don't know, some other Aladdin or something like that was playing. The traffic was backed up all the way to the entrance to the Mobile Home Park, and it was backed up all the way to the church on Dauphine, going either way. So, that's a problem also. I don't have any opposition as far as the Northman project being built. I have one of the homes that's up at the top. I've been in this neighborhood for 27 years, by the way. I was one of the first homes that was built. The house, the house that's going to be behind me, when I look out my yard and I go up and I stand on the wall that we have built, like a planner box, I look over that wall, the dirt is above my land, above my land. My husband works in construction. There's going to be a lot of dirt movement, a lot, in order for that house to be brought down to the level where all I'm going to see is the rooftop of that house? There's a lot of dirt there. So, and then that means that it's going to have to come all the way down, and then what's going to happen to the dirt that's behind my lot? Is it going to fall into that lot? So, now there's going to be a wall built? I don't know. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madalena Nieto, followed by Eric Northman, followed by Richard Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor Pantano and City Council members. As I said, my name's Madalena Nieto. With respect to the casual observers, I agree, nobody takes their daddy to the swap meet for Father's Day. So, God forbid that our community finds ourselves faced with a situation requiring evacuation, such as the community of Paradise, California, in last year's deadly fires. Right now, all 49 Rolling Hills residents plus 58 of the Northman new homes residents would be trapped trying to access one street, Dauphine Street, to turn left, when already the intersection is often blocked by traffic or we're trying to get through speeding traffic. If the Northman project does not include its own individual full-access street, or traffic improvements are not made to Dauphine Street, such as a, say, a traffic light or a four-way stop, and if something was to happen, I really feel that it would pose a significant liability to the City of Santa Maria than to correct these issues beforehand. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Northman, followed by Richard Wilson.
My name is, excuse me, Mayor Pantano and City Council members. My name is Eric Northman, and I'm speaking on behalf of the property owners of the Northman at All, property being presented to you for tentative map and a rezone. Three generations of the Northmans have held interest in this property. My grandfather bought it in 1921. Just a funny side note, not of any consequence to the gentleman that spoke before, my dad was a successful farmer in Santa Barbara, and his biggest complaint was he inherited this property from his dad, and he couldn't grow a single thing on it, including pine trees, which he tried, because the drainage is so strong due to the soil. But I'm not a soil engineer, so I can't really...
But I'm not a soil engineer, so I can't really comment on that. Rochelle Rose, the museum, mentioned that my dad left the property myself, my sister and brother-in-law, and my lovely wife Sally, as well as four nonprofits. He supported these four nonprofits throughout his life. When I first started this project, I met with the other property owners, and our goal was to come up with a high-quality, compatible subdivision that would fit well in with the scope of Santa Maria, and more importantly, to honor the legacy of my dad, because it was my dad's idea to eventually develop this property into a nice residential subdivision. A considerable effort was made on our part to accommodate the planning division's concerns, of which I'm not going to say there were few, there were a lot of them, but even more importantly, it was to accommodate, to the best of our ability, the concerns of our neighbors, the Rolling Hills Estates homeowners, as well as the First Baptist Church to the north of us. Before I talk on any topics, I do have to say one thing. I've been in the real estate development, construction lending business for a majority of my career, and what I found during that time is, is that any kind of change, whether it's the elevation of a house, whether it's the redirection of a road, no matter what it is, is generally received very negatively by the existing property owners. And I understand that. I've lived in areas where somebody's built something next to me, and I didn't like it. So I just say that before I go on with these topics. But before I begin, there's a lot of people involved in bringing this project to where it's at in front of you. I'd like to thank the planning commissioners, the city director of community development, the planning division head and staff, the director of public works, the city attorney, Paul McCoville, County of Santa Barbara Environmental Division, and Pat Abel of the Department of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources. When we first started this project, we wanted to do it with local people who knew the property, who knew their neighbors, and who had the expertise to successfully do that in a standard that was acceptable to the city. We hired Brian Schwartz and Lori Tamura of Urban Plan Concepts, Russ Garrison of Bethel Engineering, Marie Duncan of Marie Duncan and Architects, Kevin Small of Plenair Design, and Ken Fargan of Fargan Surveys. All these individuals are well-known, I think, to the community, and they have a great deal of expertise in doing this type of project, as well as other projects. Lastly, I think some recognition should also be given to our adjacent property owners, I mean, the Rolling Hills Estates owners, as well as First Baptist Church. All the people involved, that I, all the people I mentioned before have been involved in this process. And although my wife says I don't listen as well as I should, I do listen pretty carefully when somebody expresses a concern. The first concern that was brought to my attention was of the traffic. One of the ladies who spoke so ably here talked about the entry into, entry into and out of Dauphin Way. And her first comment to me was, "The school bus has to pull up, turn left, back up, and then to turn out to take schoolchildren out." How did this happen that they aren't able to turn around? The cul-de-sacs aren't big enough for them, and the only other access to the Rolling Hills Estates subdivision is through an emergency access road through the movie theater. So if anything happens in Rolling Hills, how do first responders get there? They go through Dauphin Way, or they go through the emergency access. So having heard that, I went to my engineer and said, "Is there a way we can design and access out of our subdivision so that a bus can pull into Dauphin Way, drive through our project, and then drive out on the other end?" And he said, "Yes, you can do that, but, you know, if you do that, then you're giving up one of your residential lots." And I said, "I think it's more important that safety be handled before anything else," and that's what they did. I thought it was interesting that Lady mentioned to not open Rod and Dion cul-de-sac for through traffic. I talked with my planner at one time about closing those off, but Public Works said they need to be able to come through there to bring their trash trucks and stuff through there, so it's easy for them to do it. And then they also brought up to my attention, again, first responders, fire and police, how are they going to get through? Now, you would think that you could only get into the subdivision going north on Santa Maria Way, but that's not true. If you're an emergency vehicle, you can pull into the left turn into Dauphin Way, and if that entry is blocked, you can do a U-turn and go down to the proposed new access. So I'm just saying that, if you look at that map there, there's pretty much of a flow through there. By the way, the emergency access gate for Rolling Hills Estates, if you look, not in the green part, but the next subdivision below it, where it says "drive-in," it's that upper cul-de-sac. That's a steep hill, you know, I'm sure they have keys to get in it, but it's, in practical terms, it's not an easy date. The third thing they brought to my attention was, everybody has trouble turning to the left out of Dauphin Way, and that's just a function of traffic, the speed, everything else. I don't have any control of that. I at one time proposed to Public Works to possibly put a left-hand turn for my subdivision. They said it wasn't warranted, it couldn't be justified, and they felt that possibly the city would have some liability in doing that. So they recommended that we use the proposed entry and exit that we have, which is north out and north in. The biggest complaint the homeowners had, interestingly, beside all of this, was of the swap meet. Now, I've never been down there on Sunday, but every single resident I talked to said there are no controls over the people attending the swap meet, not parking, and in some case blocking their driveways. Now, I don't know what the city can do about that, I don't know if they can post it and say, "No parking except by permit" or something, but apparently it's a major problem. I mentioned the traffic, and I mentioned the drainage. When we looked at the proposed density of this, we wanted it to be somewhat compatible, and I think we've achieved that. I was asked why, you know, we're having some two-story houses within there. The idea is, is if you're in a subdivision and you want to hold your property value, you want to live in an area that's nice. So you don't necessarily want a project to be built that's less than the project you already live in. Adding a two-story house in that, my proposed subdivision, will allow future homebuyers the opportunity to get into a bigger house if they want to. That won't injure the values of Rolling Hills Estate, that will enhance it, it'll just mean there's more sellability to it. I started out with this project, just so you know, I think the first glance I saw at it was 66 lots. I willingly, along with the other property owner's approval, gave up one lot for an entry and exit. It was then, I was then asked if I would consider putting a tot lot in, or a small park, and I said, "There's absolutely no reason why we shouldn't have a tot lot or a park in there." When you combine the number of houses in the Rolling Hills Estates and the houses that are proposed in mine, I'm sure there's going to be families that are going to move in there that are going to have small kids. Not only that, several of the Rolling Hills Estates homeowners indicated to me they were promised a park and were very disappointed when it never materialized. Now, I knew the original developer, Rich Covell, who developed that site. He wanted to buy our property and do it as one single project. His original design did not include the north-out, north-in deal, it just included Dauphin Way. And when I went to the city and I met with various, our planner, Neta, and my planning team, they said, "Well, we can do that." That's the plan we took first to the neighbors. And they said, "Well, gosh, that's, you know, you're landlocking us." And so then we went back to the table and we redesigned traffic. So, the proposed density that's in there, in my light, it's the best design we could give. I mentioned we started out with 66 lots, we are now at 58. Part of the reason we're at 58 is because the planning division and my engineer, Russ Garrison of Bethel, they looked down, and we couldn't quite get the setbacks correct on some of the lots, they were just too narrow. And so I willingly gave up some more lots to basically, not just accommodate, but to fit in the project into something that would be industry-standard and accessible. We want a good project. There, I mean, and I can't tell you with more sincerity that that's what we want. This is my dad's legacy to me, and in return, in legacy to other family members and the property owners. If we keep, if I'd have just gone forward with the original zoning, I found out after talking to a variety of real estate agents, developers, banks, a whole variety of professionals, they just said, "You know, you're not going to have a project that's going to fit anything. You really do need to make it compatible." And so, so that was what my goal was.
Thank you very much, Mr. Northman.
I'm going to make it real quick, I'm sorry, I'm not quite...
Well, you know, I should have had you speak earlier because, as an applicant, but I thought Mr. Schwartz was speaking for you, so I apologize for that.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem, and I apologize if I'm having a little trouble getting this out. I just had surgery, and so my voice doesn't work as fast as it normally used to. But, so, just in conclusion, I really hope that you will take into light all the accommodations that we've tried to make to all respective parties in reviewing this, and we hope you'll go forward with this approval. It'll allow us, the density of homes, to make it feasible, because we're going to, this project, I am not a builder, we're going to sell this project to a local Santa Maria builder, that's who's approached us to buy it, and there's a variety of them, you probably know all of them. And lastly, and this is important to me, even though there's been a lot of discussion, it'll allow Rolling Hills Estates additional entry and additional exit from their subdivision. They will no longer be landlocked, they will be able to, if they go up on the first exit and it's jammed up, they can drive to the exit into my project, turn right, and go home. And that's it. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Richard Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for taking time with us today. I've been a homeowner in Rolling Hills since 1992, an original homeowner. Graduate of Righetti High School in 1979, I'm a Marine and a mentor with the Band of Brothers, so know a little bit about me. So, I've enjoyed this whole process, and hearing the engineers, they've been great, Mr. Northman has been great. But being a father of two beautiful children, both who attended Valley Christian Academy, the Northman project is coming to us today, but 20 years ago, they knew they were going to be, they wanted to put houses in there, and they never built a sidewalk that would help our children walk to school on Santa Maria Way. Santa Maria Way is a very, very dangerous road that we have to deal with every day of my life. We've had probably 10 accidents out in front, I'm just blessed that I'm not right on there, but the last couple happened really quick during this project, and they are very sad to see. The, the, and the, when I want to turn left on Santa Maria Way onto Dauphin Road, the other side, when they want to go to the Dauphin on the other residential, they're lined up straight, so when there's two cars in there together, you cannot see oncoming traffic from the highway drive-in coming in, so you have to sit there and wait, because whoever engineered that turning, it's really a dangerous spot for all the people that drive in. I believe a signal would actually help our residential area, because U-Haul's coming in, the DMV is coming in, and all these, that road's going to be a raceway. And having children at Valley Christian Academy and the accidents, there needs to be a slowdown in that, in that part of our area. And by not taking care of that now, it's going to cost the city thousands, tens of thousands, I don't know how much it costs to put a signal in. And so I really need to see that happen for our neighborhood. One last thing, the labor hours, when they build the project, I've heard is going to be a six-day-a-week, eight-to-five, and I will, you know, for me, I like my time on Saturday and Sunday, and we really need to look at the labor hours that they're, that these builders are going to be able to do. Thank you very much for attending me. Semper Fi.
Okay. So... Yes?
Mr. Ray. Mr. Ray, they are going to put a sidewalk on Santa Maria Way in front of their property, aren't they?
Madam Mayor, Dr. Loetz, the sidewalk is a requirement, and it's, because it's adjacent to their project site, and it's, so there will be a sidewalk.
Ms. O'Neal, question?
Yes, thank you. Someone during public comment mentioned the response time given that, for medical responders with two entrances and two ways to get in and out of that new estate, has, is there any information on that? Like, would that affect response time, the fact that there's only one entrance or two entrances into the property, properties?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Soto, when this project moved through the development review process, they received input from PD and Fire, and there were no additional comments other than the fact that the two streets that have temporary cul-de-sacs of Rod and Diane, Diane Street, so there were comments about whether they should go through or not go through. I would say that the through streets would provide additional access, and additional access is usually preferred for first responders.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion and motion.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Waterfield.
From Mr. Chan and Community Development. When you sat down and talked with Mr. Northman in regards to this project, first of all, how long has this project been in the queue? How long has it been zoned?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Waterfield, this property has been zoned R1 for a long time, as far as I know, that the zoning is, current zoning is R1, 10,000, for 10,000 square foot lots, and the request is for minimum 6,000 square foot lots, but it's single-family residential, and that is the current land use.
Can this project be done if they have their own separate entrance and exiting, going both ways on Santa Maria, just going one way on Santa Maria Way?
Are you suggesting that with the two project sites be isolated with no connections between?
Well, no, because what I'm thinking of is Lawrenceeta Street in Country Club, where they have a gate. Lawrenceeta doesn't go all the way through, it has a gate, a little barrier gate that can be moved, and with all those homes there, there's only, it's divided up into where they only have two ways to get in and two ways to get out, and that's through Waller Lane and St. Andrews Street. So... in and two ways to get out, and that's through Waller Lane and St. Andrew's Street. So, if, would an emergency gate be, would it work on both Rod and Diane Street?
So, I, I mean, those are designs that are usually not preferred-
Okay.
And, and that's, in consultation with fire prevention, often they, they prefer that, that there be good access.
Yeah, no, no, and I, and that's what I needed to hear. Um, I, I get with the school buses and going in and through there would probably accommodate school buses much better for the entire project. Um, I don't know if one, one section is more retirement as avoided as by the new section going to be family, uh, housing or not in regards to that. But, you know, we've, we've gone through, this kind of reminds me of Union Valley Parkway, where it was always designated to have that road go all the way through, and when ti- time came to, to do it, it wasn't, it wasn't a popular thing to do, so.
That's why it didn't go through for so long-
That's right.
-because it wasn't a popular thing to do.
Absolutely. So, I'm just kind of questioning a design that might work in regards to this, to this particular project, only because I know that it's been, uh, zoned for residential for many, many decades. And I believe that, you know, as, as we look at if the zoning and everything else, if it's in order and all the parameters are met, um, this is something that we need to look at and, and, uh, try to make the, the planning process work for both parties if we can.
Mr. Ing, what, what is the road then that goes out to Santa Maria Way from this Northman Project? That is, is that Rod?
Madam Mayor, the, the Rod is parallel to Santa Maria Way.
Is parallel, okay.
The one that goes east-west is the new proposed street-
Yes.
And it's, uh, it's not yet named.
Oh, it's not yet named, okay. Okay.
Mr. Ing.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah. Mr. Ing, uh, one of the people that testified before us was concerned that the construction traffic only go on the unnamed street, which hasn't yet been built, to keep construction vehicles from going into, uh, the Rolling Hills. Is that a possibility?
I think as this project moves forward, uh, we will have a pre-construction meeting with the development team and with city staff, and Public Works may be able to speak, um, in, and provide additional comments.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman-
Yes, Mr. Bayes?
Um, on the, as, as, as Mr. Ing had mentioned, that, yes, we'll have a pre-construction meeting, and I've heard the concerns of, of construction, um, construction and, um, concerns. And so with, with the pre-construction meeting, like any, any development, I'll use the Enos Ranch development as, as a good example, is we generally have these, these pre-construction meetings to address concerns that we expect to hear. We've heard them, and this is a good, um, a good beginning because, um, we will use these in our pre-construction meetings to, to let, let the develop, excuse me, the developer know what the concerns are. Yes, we would like to have them limit the construction activity, um, so there isn't a lot of activity into the existing development, and if possible, we would ask the developer if they can, uh, construct the, the road, the unnamed road that goes onto Santa Maria Way, so that we can establish that first, and then that activity can happen at, at that point versus the existing, uh, development.
That's a good idea.
You know, I'd like to make a comment. Um, I've ne- I have never driven up there to Rolling Hills until I went up to look at this project. And, um, I, I would be very, you know, I, if I, if, if, I have to look at things as if this were, was me, and you drive up there and it's a nice, nice neighborhood, and it's very quiet, it's very pleasant, and if I had a home that could look out further without anything blocking the view, I would just love that. And I, I really, um, I'm not going to support the, the map amendment, and I'm not going to support the zone change, because you, you have a neighborhood, you have got people who want to come out and say, this is what I bought, this is what I agreed on, and now you guys are going to try to change the rules. And I have a real problem with that, because they have invested time and money, and they're just all lovely homes up there, and the landscaping is, is very nice. And it's a little, it's a neighborhood. And, uh, you know, each one of us live where we chose to live. I've got some apartments being built across from me, and I know they're starting at like five-thirty or six in the morning, but I haven't called you guys, because I want them to hurry up and get them built. But, um, the, the tranquility up there and everything, I just, I just, um, they, they want it preserved, and that's their neighborhood and that's their homes. And so I, I, I'm not even, I won't support this.
May I ask a question?
Ms. Soto.
This, this site has been zoned for housing, even if we wouldn't be making the amendments to the zoning change. Do you think that we would be having this similar discussions we're having tonight?
If the, uh, Councilwoman Soto and Madam Mayor, if the general plan amendment and zone change were, were not to be approved, the, the, the land use and zoning current will stay, so it would be R-ten thousand. The minimum lot size would be ten thousand square feet. The property owner is still, has ability to submit a map. The map will have a reduction of lots, and due to the, uh, size that's permitted.
Right. So, I, I guess my question is, if we were to be seeing a project with the current, the way that it's currently zoned, would the concerns of the residents that we hear about traffic, um, the tranquility in the neighborhood due to more families moving in, would that still be, or, or even the view side, the view of their backyard, would that still be something that people would be talking about?
Some of that would be difficult to anticipate, because I, I don't want to presume what, how the neighbor, neighborhood would react. I do know that the proposal contains fifty-eight lots for single-family homes. If it was, uh, minimum R-ten thousand, ten thousand square foot lots, I, I don't know what the reduction of the number of homes would be, but it, say it's in the range of forty, any other-
Six. I'm sorry, he's saying six.
Yep.
I'm sorry, but I, if I could just answer that question. The max, the density allowed at ten thousand square feet is fifty-two units. There are fifty-eight units being proposed, is an increase of six units. The impacts and the concerns would still remain the same. Or, let me, let me rephrase that. The perceived impacts.
Any other questions, Ms. Soto?
No.
Ms. Waterfield?
Did you have anything else? I'm sorry.
Oh.
Director Chan.
It's sufficient.
I have a question for our legal counsel. This project is zoned for residential. Can we deny something that, can we legally deny a project if it's zoned appropriately because we don't like it or something doesn't work right, or, um, because I feel like we're taking all the rights away from, uh, the, the ownership of this property.
Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel, um, what's before you is a discretionary request-
Correct.
-which is to change the zoning.
Right.
If the applicant came in with a ten thousand square foot lot currently zoned, there would not be the same request, and therefore there would not be the ability to deny in the circumstance.
That's what I thought.
So, as a result, the impact to the neighborhood would be, in, in essence, the same, because there would still be the opportunity to build.
To build a house.
The difference is the, the change of density for which you are having this discussion.
Is what brought this forward, and I realize that. But we, we, other than that, we don't have any authority. If he was, if he would have brought the same, uh, the original zoning into us, it would have been-
Discretion would be very different, yes, ma'am.
Absolutely, okay.
Any questions?
I guess what, what I'm just worried about, and I know the residents, I know a lot of the residents there, and I understand their dilemma, um, and I understand the private ownership rights too of a land that has been in a family for decades and decades to want to build and, um, make an investment, make a good investment. So, um, this is something that is, you know, tugging, um, at the heart, but then I have to look at the, the legality of what a person with a good investment wants to do with his property. And so, it's, uh, it's going to be a tough decision, but I just want to look at the legality of it.
Um, infill, as we know, is always the toughest-
It is, it is. It's very, it's very tough.
Dr. Moats, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. Any questions?
Discussion.
Okay, do you-
Oh, I just-
Do you want to make a motion, or does anyone want to make a motion?
Well, we should comment first.
Is it possible to make a final closing statement?
The public comment is, the area is closed, Brian.
Okay.
You, you, go ahead.
Okay, well, I, I tend to favor this project. Um, I think it's met all the requirements. It's been screened by the Planning Commission, voted I-five to nothing. Um, I don't perceive the traffic flow to be so awful that we'd turn it down. And as mentioned, if the lots were ten thousand square feet, they'd just build the same thing.
Right.
Unfortunately, there's no guarantee to a view shed. I, I know if I had a great view and somebody built a house behind me, I'd be quite upset. But if I knew that was zoned R1, somebody was going to build something behind me anyways, at, or at least a potential, um, you know, I would factor that in before I bought the house. Um, that's always a liability. So, um, I think that I would favor this project.
Okay, did you want to make any closing comments, Mr. Cordero?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Soto, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, as we've seen here in the city of Santa Maria, we've been, we, we're experiencing a housing shortage, and this is an opportunity for us to, as we're looking at housing developments, we're, we're doing it in a way that I feel is incredibly, um, thoughtful when it comes to infill. Um, looking at what areas have yet to be developed within the current city limits and, and, within our current city limits. And so, um, that's just a point that, that I, I'd like to make.
Thank you. Okay. Someone make a motion, or not?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a general planned land use policy map amendment for the Northman Residential Project with a lot of numbers. On Santa Maria Way between Sunrise Drive and Dofan Street, I'd like, shall I make them all, all three?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a recommendation to adopt a resolution approving the Northman Residential Tentative Track Map, tract sixty-eighteen TR-2018-0003, and I'd like to make a recommendation to introduce an ordinance for the first reading and continue to the next meeting for a second reading and adoption, amending the official zoning map for the Northman Residential Project on Santa Maria Way between Sunrise Drive and Dofan Street.
Madam Mayor, point of clarification, rather than a recommendation, he's moving the, the adoption and those resolutions.
And resolution.
Just that the record reflects it correctly.
I'm glad you were paying attention, Mr. Watson.
That's my job.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to adopt a resolution, to introduce an ordinance, and to adopt another resolution. I won't go, I won't be as, um, as, I just won't say it all. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
No. Motion carries. Okay. Um, our next order of business is another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing to consider protest to the, um, proposed assessments for the city's annual weed abatement program to collect as part of the 2019-20 property tax rolls.
Okay, staff report is to be made by our principal civil engineer, Mr. Bayes.
Honorable Mayor, um, the 2019 weed abatement program.
Excuse me, excuse me out there, the meeting is still going. Go ahead, Mr. Bayes.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Works, Public Works mailed an abatement letter to owners of a hundred and seventy-five properties listed in Resolution Number 2019-29 on March twentieth, 2019. The letter informed property owners of the weed abatement program and advised them that their property was in need of abatement. The abatement letter gave a deadline of April eighth, 2019, for property owners to notify Public Works of their intent to accomplish their own abatement. On April sixteenth, 2019, the City Council adopted Resolution 2019-43. The resolution authorized the director of Public Works slash city engineer to abate the nuisances as described in Resolution 2019-29. The nuisances were to be abated by the removal of weeds, rubbish, and dirt by appropriate means in accordance with Title Five, Chapter Five-dash-eight of the Santa Maria Municipal Code. After receiving notification, property owners themselves abated one hundred fifty-nine lots. The city contractor abated weeds and debris on sixteen lots. The acting Public Works Operations Manager has developed a report of costs and has listed by assessor parcel number the sixteen lots abated by the city contractor. An administrative fee was assessed to cover the costs associated with the work required to administer the program, secure the services of contractors, and measure the areas of abatement for payment to the contractors. The cost of abatement constitutes a special assessment against said properties. Charges for the service will be added to the property tax for each parcel abated by the city. These reimbursed, these ream, excuse me, these reimbursements are collected by the Santa Barbara County Auditor-and-Controller's Office and refunded to the city. Subsequent cuttings, should they become necessary, are generally addressed by lot owners or their agents. If the city becomes involved in additional abatements for the calendar year, the costs will be assessed on the following year's tax bill. The city's budget, the city budgets ten thousand dollars per year to support amounts paid to the contractor for abatement services. The cost for weed abatement for 2019 is two thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents. This fee includes the city's twenty-five percent administrative fee and overall falls within the ten thousand dollar annual budget. This concludes staff's presentation of the 2019 weed abatement program.
Thank you. Are any questions from the council? I'd like to open up a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, so then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Mayor, I, I'll make the motion.
Sure, Mr. Cordero.
Unless somebody else wants to talk about it.
Nope.
Uh, the City Council, I, uh, make a motion that the City Council approve the Resolution 2019-dash-43 authorizing the abatement of the public nuisance described in Resolution 2019-dash-29 by having the weeds, rubbish, refuge, dirt, streets, sidewalk, and private property removed in accordance with Chapter Five, uh, with Five, uh, dash-eight.
Is there a second?
Of the Santa Maria Municipal Code.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. The next item is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will review a draft letter to the County of Santa Barbara regarding employee housing in unincorporated areas and provide direction to staff.
Staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Ing.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, back in April sixteen, 2019, the council adopted ordinances, ordinance regulating employee housing in residential zones. We've talked about how this is a multi-pronged approach, and that ordinance for residential zones is one of many ways and methods to improve the housing situation, in particular, housing for farm workers. One of the suggestions include a, a letter to the county, strongly urging them to also find ways to facilitate for farm worker housing. So, we've attached a draft for your review, and, and we look for further direction as to any modifications that you would like to be made to the letter or any edits- modifications that you would like to be made to the letter or any edits. And I'll just briefly read the last paragraph that I think may capture the tone of the letter. "We strongly encourage the county to facilitate the development of employee housing in close proximity to where agricultural laborers work, including but not limited to the unincorporated communities of Sisquaw, Beteravia, Tangalwood, and Gary, and other historically agricultural-serving areas with some level of infrastructure, educational, and public facilities. We believe that agricultural work labors who serve our region should have a safe and comfortable place to live with access to necessary services and amenities. In order to achieve this, we must explore all options to increase housing supply, including the location of added housing supply in the county. Please increase options and approve development requests for farm worker housing in unincorporated communities, neighborhoods, and farm sites." We invite... Staff invites any additional comments or edits and invites direction from the council.
Thank you. Any advice, edits from the council? Mr. Cordero?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. When I first read the letter, first up, thank you very much, I think the letter is very well-written. I know that later on in your last paragraph, you add this word, but we say in the second paragraph, "We urge the county to increase options and approve the development." I think there ought to be "we strongly urge." It's just a personal thing, and I'm willing to acquiesce and listen to the rest of the council if they don't think that we should be that strong. But I just believe that we need to put the right English on the letter so that they understand that we're hurting up here. This has been over a year process getting this thing through, and the community was torn apart by it for some period of time. So I just... Not that I don't think that the supervisors will understand that, but whatever we need to do to make them understand a little bit better, it should be strongly written.
I think what Mr. Cordero's... And I would concur, it needs to be stronger. I would like to see a shorter letter and very, very strong. Because we're taking everything here in Santa Maria, they're doing nothing out there. So... So, did you add a comment?
Yeah, I have a question. Was this letter written... Was it written after reading up on what the county has already implemented or what they're already doing? Because I believe they already made a decision on H2A or employee housing out in unincorporated areas of the county, and from my understanding, it's somewhat lenient, 20... A CUP for 20... Is it 20? Up to 20, 25-plus per unit? Or... Yeah. So I don't know what... I just don't know if we took into consideration or have looked into what the county has already decided on and whether or not this would even do anything for them to reopen what they've already voted on.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Soto, so this letter was written from the perspective of what we are experiencing as a community of Santa Maria. It was not necessarily in reflection of their recent approvals.
Okay.
So I would be in agreement with Mr. Cordero and Madam Mayor Patino in regards to using "strongly urge," and then if we could reduce the letter somewhat to make it just straight and forward, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I concur with that, too.
Okay. So we have a 5-0 on that. Okay.
No, I didn't see that.
No. Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Okay. So I'll just bring this back to the council and discussion. Any discussion, further discussion, and direction to the staff? Do you have enough direction there, Ms. Eng?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I just want it to be clear that at least myself as councilwoman, I... That we value the work that agriculture... The value that agriculture brings to the city of Santa Maria, as well as farm workers, farm labor, and that includes H2A farm workers. They bring a huge supply to our economy, they are part of this community, and at least from my point, we value and respect them. I would also like to ask, I know that this letter is coming from a meeting that... One of the meetings... The meeting where we ended up moving forward with an ordinance, and so part of those negotiations was also on each... On the tenant displacement assistance, and I'd like to ask where we're at on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Soto, we've done some research, and some of the research is ongoing. There's some complexities to a proposed ordinance such as what the triggers are and what the median rents would be, but it's... The research is ongoing.
How long do you think it will take for us to see something before the council?
We hope to have something available within a couple of months, but we also would take further direction from council.
What is it that's holding up the process? I know that you said research. What kind of research are you having to do?
Councilwoman Soto, so it's looking at examples from other jurisdictions, but also crafting something that would meet the needs of our community. There are some staffing constraints currently. We have three vacant positions, and so part of it is a staffing issue, but in summary, that's what's happening.
Can you specify... Can you go into more detail as to what makes our city unique? What specifics make us different from other cities that have similar programs?
Madam Mayor, I apologize that I need to jump in at this point, but this is not an agendized item, and we're going way beyond the scope of this.
We're just talking about the letter right now. That's all we can talk about.
Thank you. No. Thank you.
Okay.
Keeping us in line.
Okay. Mr. Eng, you have enough to go on then for the letter.
I do, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation on the 2020 census and adopt a resolution supporting the city's participation in the 2020 census efforts to encourage a complete and accurate count of Santa Maria residents.
So staff report is to be made by our Public Information Manager, Mr. Vandykamp.
We'll try that again. Good evening, everyone. We have a presentation. Now, keep in mind that this is something which has a huge consequence to the community in terms of funding and political representation. I think we're looking at 261 days to go until the census arrives. So we're just run through a few slides, and I have a cheesy one at the end featuring yours truly. I am glad to take any questions from you or from the community. I don't believe in reading everything on a PowerPoint, but we want to go through and let everyone know that the census truly matters. And we have some graphics that are from the Census Bureau. Everyone counts. Whether you're a citizen or a noncitizen, the census wants to have you counted. It's about fair representation. It's also about a lot of money coming to the city or an undercount resulting in loss of funding to the city, to nonprofits. I think it's around $71 billion a year coming to California. So the decennial census is held every 10 years. Here's an example, about $2,000 per person per year in federal funding. So if you take, say, 1,000 children between the ages of 1 and 5, say that they are not counted for various reasons, that adds up to $20 million in safety net services in a decade. Businesses rely on the census greatly. They use the demographics to make investment decisions, job training, childcare, it goes on and on. The key issue for this census, which I believe we have all heard, it has permeated each and every one of us, is trust because of the headlines throughout the year. Trust is critical. Many households are residing together in single-family houses. We have mixed households holding different immigration status. Some families move around a lot. And this year... Or this census, it'll be a digital census rather than everybody receiving every single piece of information in the mail. This time around, the government... The federal government is relying on a digital census. So we get to Santa Maria. We have a real challenge ahead of us. There are an estimated 67,000-plus residents in Santa Maria who live in what the census calls hard-to-count neighborhoods. We, on the staff and a number of people in the community, will not be surprised to hear that Santa Maria is the epicenter for the hard-to-count populations in all of Santa Barbara County. I'm going to skip ahead. Here's a map of the county, and you see that the areas in white are really not very hard to count whatsoever. Then you get into the darker and darker colors, and you can see that North County is where it's most hard to count. Granted, a large chunk of North County is Vandenberg Air Force Base, and you can count jackrabbits out there in the scrub, but in Santa Maria, we have six... Five or six census tracts that are classified as very difficult to count everyone there. I believe we actually have four or five of the toughest-to-count census tracts in the entire county. So if you look at mid-county, like communities like Solvang, Beelton, or you look in Montecito, they have a score of hard-to-count of maybe eight, or nine, or 10, or 11. Santa Maria has five or six that are above 60. We have one... We have a couple in the 90s, and we have one at 102. So there's a challenge. The hard-to-count is you can't wave it off and say it's only undocumented people. It could be renters. It could be those who have a lot of children in the household, people who move around a lot. Poverty is a big issue. And as we already know, our demographics are that about 74% of everyone in Santa Maria identifies as Hispanic. You could say Hispanic or Latino, but that's what it says on the forms. And a significant percentage, but by no means all, of those people do not speak English at home. So there's another barrier. This slide, according to this one from the government's, may be 27%. But I've... Over the years, I've seen that number jump around. Another big issue that we have apparently overcome is that the administration wanted to have a citizenship question on the census, and that caused considerable consternation in this community, across California, and across the country. The Supreme Court on June 28 said no. Today, just before the council got started, CNN and other websites lit up with the news that a New York federal judge also said no. And if you believe those news sites effectively killing it, so the census question... The citizenship question will not be on. However, because that's been out there, there is a lot of concern, and there is some misinformation out there. I also put on here that yes, H2A workers will be counted. The previous agenda item mentioned H2A, we have, I believe it's maybe 2,000 H2A workers who are here in Santa Maria, and should they be moving out by the time the census comes around, the powers that be have told me, you have to assume that other people will come in also as H2A, and they're part of our community. They need to be counted. Almost done. I know it's a long meeting, but this is serious. Just to give you a quick idea of what's coming in spring, everyone will receive an invitation to respond online. You'll get a reminder letter and a postcard, but you need to have access. So if you're fortunate, you can do it on your phone, but if you don't have a computer, our public library is going to make available public computers to go there, and by then, it may be open on Sundays. So we're doing a lot of outreach as a city. We want to step up and take a leadership position. That's our obligation to you and the community. We've coordinated some outreach workshops. We're networking with those trusted messengers. Trusted messengers is a good buzzword, but frankly, it really does mean something. That could mean clergy from your church. It could be a nonprofit. Anybody you really, really trust. It could be your friendly anchorman on Telemundo or Univision. And we're cooperating with the Census Bureau, providing information they're requesting. We're also going a bit further, and we've decided to come up with a graphic in English and in Spanish. And we have taken a one-time amount of money to purchase 2,000 grocery bags in English and 2,000 in Spanish, which will make available to nonprofits, the food bank, grocery stores come spring. They're pretty durable. No one else is doing it yet, but they will, and we've heard some good feedback. Everybody wants one. So here's a cheesy slide I promised. I want people to know that they can reach out and bug me, and I can... I'm posed for pictures, they'll sign autographs, but this is really... It's about you. It's about the community. We're counting on you to get counted. And so I put up my information, should anyone be interested in joining our Complete Count Committee. And what we're asking you tonight is to adopt a resolution affirming support and partnership with the census so that we can get the best possible count here in Santa Maria. And I'm available for questions and autographs.
Any questions of Mr. Vandykamp?
I do. How much money would the city be losing if we have an undercount approximately?
It would be in the millions of dollars every year. It depends on the size of the undercount. We have suffered an undercount in previous census counts, and California overall is believed to have lost several billion dollars in each of the last several years.
If we undercount by one person, it's $2,000 a year that we'd be losing, and over a period of 10 years, the loss would be 20 million if 1,000 people weren't counted. So it's really important. Any questions, Mr. Vandykamp? So you got off pretty easy tonight, Mark.
I just...
I think it's your place on the agenda that makes it possible. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. I'll bring this back to the... This item back to the council for a discussion. Any discussion, motion, nothing?
I just like to thank Mark for his leadership in really stepping in and supporting the city in this effort. It's been great to see your leadership at the county level and really advocating for our residents and supporting, again, and building this trust so that people get counted and... Yeah. So it's been great working with you. So thank you so much for stepping up. I really appreciate it.
Yes. Mr. Cordero?
Mark, are there any plans to do anything with the Spanish radio stations and things like that in order to do our best at trying to set the minds of these people at ease?
That's a great question. Yes, there is an effort. We're going to be working with our local radio stations, and the county of Santa Barbara has a Complete Count Committee. There's also... So there's about $154 million in state funds that's going to be trickling down to the cities, but at first it stops at the county, and some of it stops at the philanthropic organizations as well. And in speaking with both representatives at the county and at the Santa Barbara Foundation, even down in Ventura, they have some plans for media outreach, and what really comes up over and over again is the value of Spanish media, whether it be both radio and television. So we are going to be working as much as... Quite as closely as we can. There are some models that everyone's looking to share, and we believe that we can reach a great many of our population, as well as the Misteco and Zapoteco populations within Santa Maria in that aspect. So thank you. It's a great question.
Okay.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
Mark, assuming that we get an accurate count of all the people in the city of Santa Maria, how many people will there be in Santa Maria?
More than there are now. We are...
When we get that accurate count, we'll let you know. How's that?
We are somewhere around 108,000 now, and I've heard estimates that it's much higher. I know from reliable sources... I know from reliable sources, if you will, that of course our dayton population expands because a number of people are coming to work here in Santa Maria, but what we're looking for are those who are in households. It's really anyone's guess. I would not be surprised to see it top 110,000, but I don't want to make any predictions because I don't like being wrong. But I would say that a good indicator is, we were 77,423 in 2000. We grew about 28% in the next decade to just under 100,000, but our population has leveled off, according to the Santa Maria Bonita School District. It was seeing population of around, enrollment of about 500 per year, but that's leveled off. But there's still, I believe that we have an undercount that's persisting in our community, and we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that everybody is counted.
One more, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With regard to the, see, I don't want to word this, with regard to the getting out to the people a little bit more, some of these people, you mentioned a digital system, so in order for me to fill out the census, just for my wife and I, I've got to go on a computer, bring up the site, and then fill in the blanks, right? I got a strong feeling that many of these people that we're talking about have never sat in front of a computer before. Is there going to be any offer up to help these people to get the count right and to assist them in the digital world?
Yes, that's another great question. Not everybody has a computer. We've looked at how many people might have a computer here in Santa Maria, based on statistics provided ironically by the census. Actually, it's not that ironic at all, they count everything, and I've seen, we've seen, however, in some of those hard-to-count census tracts, that many people, even if they have a computer, they don't have broadband access, and that's where we're going to make our efforts in our media outreach, and here at City Hall, to invite them to come to public computers at the library, nonprofits, they get it. Nonprofits understand, because when they come here, they come to you, the council, and they're seeking CDBG funds, and our city presently receives a little over $1.5 million in CDBG, Community Development Block grant funds, but the need is even greater, as you well know. So as trusted messengers, they're in a prime position to help educate people of the importance of where to go find a computer. Councilmember Soto and I, and another person are on a, volunteering on a subcommittee for the county's Complete Count Committee, and we're identifying some of those needs as well. Again, obviously, not everyone may have the tools, and part of this messaging is to connect people, which is one thing I think the city does extremely well. We connect people to resources.
Let me ask you a question. I know that in the elementary, in the Santa Maria Bonita School District, a lot of the kids, of course, are very computer savvy. Are they going to be brought into this, so that they, say, like, back-to-school night or parents' night, where the parents can go to school and the kids can get them through the, through the whole process of the census?
That's a great idea. We'd be glad to steal that idea and use that. Part of it is the timing. We want to ensure that the timing is just right. You want to make sure that we, we would like to make sure we work with the schools, we've invited them to the meetings. Some have shown up already, and you're absolutely right, Madam Mayor, that children are often the ones who teach their parents how to do it. I was taught by my nephew how to fix the blinking VCR in my living room, and I'll always remember that. Now he's going off to college, he reminds me of that. And schools have a terrific outreach network as well with newsletters, so, yeah, we want to partner with them. And for that matter, we'd like to partner with Downtown Fridays. The only downside about this, and not a knock on that event whatsoever, is that it's literally closed from the end of September and resumes at the end of March, and the census is taking place on April 1st. So we're looking for some other ideas, and.
Maybe we could do a special Downtown Friday night for that.
Maybe.
Special.
Special, especial, yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution affirming support and partnership with the 2020 census and encouraging community participation for a complete and accurate count.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any other further discussions? Haring none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The next meeting of the city council is August 6th, and we have the Santa Maria Valley Beautiful Awards presentation to look forward to, and we are also working to schedule a community presentation, much like we had tonight with Alan Hancock. That concludes my report.
Okay, Mr. Cordero, shall we start with you?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we can. On June 19th, I attended the Home for Good Funding Meeting down in Beelton, and that continues to go in a positive direction, and we're learning more and more about how the funding is taking place. On June 20th, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Leadership Santa Maria out on Carmen Lane, adjacent to the school there, and that's a pretty impressive project, and I think that them partnering with Parks and Rec was a really good idea, and I think that that community garden's going to be really nice. Then I attended the, the planning meeting, planning committee meeting for the CAC on the same day, and later in that day, I attended the United Way Meeting out at Loris College. It was a busy day. On the 23rd, I attended the SBAGAN Looking Forward Awards Dinner. On the 26th, I went to the, I attended the city manager's open house social here at City Hall. On 1st of July, can't even read my own writing here. On the 1st of July, on the 7th of July, I attended the Celebration of Life for Richard Hargren and for Kurt Cusack or something like that, out at, were the ones that were victims of the.
Mobile Home Park?
Mobile Home Park.
Yes.
And on the 10th, I was at another CAC meeting in Beelton, and that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
This will be short. On June 19th, I went to the Combined City Council Airport Meeting, where we learned about when we're finally going to get some sort of air transport out of the city of Santa Maria Municipal Airport, and it doesn't look like there's anything imminent.
I thought you were going to say there's something coming.
No, I wish I would. On July 1st, I went to a meeting here at City Hall with Mr. Springer on issues relative to water and wastewater, and that's all I did.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
On Wednesday, June 19th, that was, wow, we met a long time ago. I also attended the Public Airport District Meeting with Dr. Moats and city manager Jason Stillwell. On Thursday, June 20th, we had the Complete Count Steering Committee call with the county. That same day, I attended the Santa Barbara County Complete Count Steering Committee, where they had Attorney General Javier Becerra in attendance, and we talked about the importance of getting an accurate count. On Friday, June 21st, I met with People Self-Help Housing to discuss farmworker housing. Monday, June 24th, we had, I had a meeting with Commissioner Paul Lee and Lori Tamara regarding Aqua Center, Santa Maria Day Reporting Center Graduation Ceremony that took place on June 25th. On Wednesday, the 26th, it was the city manager's office open house. The ice cream was amazing that day. My favorite was a cookie and cream. Thank you to the staff who put that together, that was awesome. On June 27th, I attended Santa Barbara Wine County Why Wine Matters, the Econ Alliance. That same day, I had a happy hour with the council member, and then after that, I attended the airport Mobile Home Park Town Hall, where they wanted me to give a little update. I spoke at the Third Annual Santa Maria Pride Celebration on June 29th. Again, we had a census call on July 1st. And 4th of July, on July 7th, was the Celebration of Life over Casa Grande Senior Mobile Home Estates that I attended with councilmember Cordero. And then, I'm sure, there's more census stuff, fun. Oh, and then on Saturday, I was invited to be the keynote speaker for the Barisanian Club International, which is an organization that's made up of people from a small town out in the Philippines, and they gather once a year and they hold fundraisers, and it was a really fun event. I was honored to be able to be there. That's it. And now I'm here.
June 19th, I was still on jury duty. June 20th, I was still on, oh, they finally released me after four days. I attended this SBAG Board Meeting in the morning, attended the Marion Legacy Society Luncheon, APCD Board Meeting in the afternoon, and Home for Good Training at the Santa Maria Library. And you forgot the 22nd of June, which is the League of Women Voters, the general meeting at Shepherd Hall. Ms. Soto was there to discuss the census. And then, on June 26th, the Marion Foundation Board of Directors Meeting. On the 27th, I attended the Countywide Recreation Planning Summit at the San Andres Valley Marriott in the morning, and then the afternoon, I went into the Santa Barbara Wine Country Econ Alliance Meeting. On June 30th, Concerts in the Park at Centennial Park. On the 4th, I attended, 4th was a Sunday, yeah, no, the 4th wasn't a Sunday, the 4th was the 4th, the Youth Academy Graduation at Santa Maria Police Department, where they took some youth for about four days and just ran them through a lot of the rigorous training that the police officers do. And I did not go to the Red, White &amp; Boom Firework Show, because they were all around my neighborhood, so I didn't have to go, didn't have to leave home. July 6th, attended the Santa Barbara County Fair Kickoff Dinner and Party at the Fair Park. Did you mention that, Mr. Cordero?
Yes, no, I didn't mention that.
You did. And Mr. Cordero and his wife were there. On July 10th, I got invited to meet our Vice President, Michael Pence, came to Vandenberg. And on the 11th, I went out on an Era Energy Tour on East Cat Canyon, and then that evening, helped design a new community park at the Betts Memorial Hall, and there were six veterans there, and I gave a lot of input how they would like the park to really show how much the veterans contributed to our community. On the 12th, I attended the 2019 30th Space Wing Change of Command. Colonel Huff left, and we have a new commander there at Vandenberg. July 13th, I attended the Pioneer Park, Pioneer Picnic out at Pioneer Park. On the 14th, Concert in the Park. And this morning, I did the Ben Hayes Show, and I watched the Board of Supervisors Meeting regarding the Community Choice Energy Discussion today, and I'm still confused. So, anything else from the council at all? If not, this meeting is adjourned.